First, I'd like to offer my condolences or our condolences to the Munees family. Mr. Munees served in Battery C, the 6th Artillery Battalion, 61st Artillery Regiment, 5th Army, United States Army Vietnam during the Vietnam War. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Mr. Munees' family and other folks who have passed. Before we go for the approval of minutes, I'd like to remind everybody that all meeting -- this meeting is being aired live and recorded for future reference. That being said, I'd like to go on to approval for the --
Motion to approve the minutes of June 5th, 2018?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Announcements from the President.
Shall we vote on that?
Sorry. My mistake. Moving right along.
And just a reminder, I have to abstain, so I'm waiting for the votes.
Yes, okay. Those in favor of the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstaining.
Yes, one abstaining. Those against it? Now, President's announcements. Coming up very shortly is the Bridgewater 4th of July celebration. All events are on July 4th, begins at 10:00 a.m. with a parade. At 11:00 a.m. we have arts and music at the quad at BSU. All kinds of great things. At 5:00 p.m. we have rides and food and music. 9:30 p.m. fireworks at Legion Field. Everybody should be familiar with the awesome display of fireworks. Hopefully, everybody on the council has got their 4th of July T-shirts. I got mine, first time. It's very privileged to have one. I'm not sure if everybody does. 100% of this event is funded by donations, and please help to continue this great tradition and give when you're there enjoying everything that we have to offer. For info regarding parade and fireworks and donate to log on to BridgewaterMA4TH, bridgewaterma4th.com, or email Lisa at B U Z Z C U R L at Comcast.net. For info regarding arts and music festival and to donate, log on to same.com site or email Nora at NoraTarr, T-A-R-R, at Comcast.net. Nora.Tarr@Comcast.net. It's gonna be great. Hopefully, everybody can make the parade. Proclamations for this evening? No proclamations. Citizens, open forum. Any citizens would like to have something to say, please step up and state your name, address, and --
My name is Pat Neary, 225 Lakeside Drive. Good evening. I wanted to mention a couple of things about the hearing last week because I know you -- well, I think you'll be discussing one of the marijuana ordinances tonight, 008. And I hope you've had a chance to view a video of the joint hearing, emphasis on joint, of the CEDC and Planning Board that was held last Wednesday night. This hearing was subsequent to the April 17th hearing, which was continued because of language changes and the need for clearer definitions. However, last Wednesday, I think that the committee and the board were still unclear about what the actual definitions are. The Cannabis Control Commission has drawn up the definitions, and some are vague. Therefore, the boards find it somewhat confusing. Unless you have really studied these regulations, as members of the Bridgewater Cares have, it can be tricky. I hope that you know and understand these definitions when you're voting on these ordinances. Because our town voted no on marijuana, the CCC regulations tell us that our town may limit the number of any type of marijuana establishment to fewer than the number of medical facilities registered to engage in the same type of activity in the city or town. Let's be clear. A marijuana establishment is not a location or a business. It's not a building. It's the actual activity. That's the way they refer to it in the regulations. For example, it could be cultivation. That's a marijuana establishment, and that's what they refer to in the regulations. Therefore, we can limit the number of marijuana establishments to two, which is the number of medical facilities that we have. That would mean for the two medi pots in our town, we can limit the marijuana establishments to one activity for each of those businesses. Please also note that in the revised ordinance that you will be discussing tonight, the third whereas refers to Mass. General Law 94G, Section 32AII, allows local control to limit the number of recreational locations equal to the number of medical locations. That language in our revised ordinance, specifically the word "location," is not even in 94G. The regulation reads, "94G allows local control to limit the number of marijuana establishments to fewer than the number of RMDs registered to engage in the same type of activity." No reference to recreational locations. This was pointed out to the committee and the board members last week, and it is still in this revised ordinance that you're looking at tonight. Most of Counselor Wood's original ordinance presented in November quoted the regulation correctly, but over time, these words have changed. I'm not sure why. Again, we hope you understand these definitions. It is complicated, but you have to understand them. We, Bridgewater Cares, are simply trying to do what's best for our society, and that is to not encourage more drugs, whether it be in our town or produced here and sent to other towns. I thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. Any other comments for citizens' open forum?
Taylor Sullivan, 250 New Orleans Park. So, probably going off of what Pat said, but at the hearing, they mentioned the special permit to limit to two. So, we're just here basically reiterating that. We believe that it should be limited to the number of RMDs, which would be a marijuana establishment is considered cultivation, and then product manufacturing is a separate establishment. So, that special permit would equal four marijuana establishments in our town opposed to the two. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens for citizens' open forum? Seeing now and moving on to appointments.
Mr. President, I'd like to separate appointments into a motion to appoint Mr. Owes, Mr. Wohlhojen, Mr. Frim, Ms. Columbo, Ms. Raza, Ms. Lemieux, Mr. Del Monte, Mr. Carterelli, Mr. Rushton, Mr. Moore, Ms. Anderson, Mr. O'Jemian, and Mr. Heath to their respective committees, and holding off Mr. Wood for a separate vote because his son is sitting on our council, so I believe he wants to step out for that vote. So, I'd make that motion to appoint all of the people I just said except for Mr. Wood.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbon, seconded by Mr. George. Any discussion on that?
None.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against? Okay. So, removing a --
So, I'll make a motion to approve the large group that we just discussed.
Got a second?
I thought we just did that. We just voted.
We just voted that?
Yeah.
So, you made a motion to separate the groups. I didn't think you made a motion to approve the group.
Oh, well, all right. Well, either way, we'll do that, too. Second, then.
Okay, so now we've separated them effectively. Now, we're gonna -- those in favor of voting on all but Mr. Wood, those in favor of voting them in? Aye?
Aye.
Those against? Okay. Mr. Wood will recuse.
Stand in the corner.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint Mr. Wood to the Historical Commission.
Second.
Made by Mr. Fitzgibbon, seconded by Mr. George. Any discussion?
None.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Okay, all set. Come on in. Didn't hear a thing, did he? Okay, hearings, none. License transactions, none. Presentations, none. Town managers' report.
Mr. President, I have a few items this evening. One, just a reminder, please, to the councilors, please feel free to call or text me during the week or the off weeks if you have any questions. I often get asked questions in this setting, and I try to answer them, and I'm not always accurate, so I'm trying not to answer questions I'm not very clear about. So, just that reminder. A quick note on the July meeting. I apologize in advance because you'll have a lot of business at that meeting. Unfortunately, the Finance Committee hasn't been able to get a quorum until tonight, so a lot of recommendations that have been building up, finance recommendations, will be coming to you on the -- at the July meeting, including year-end transfers and items that have to be resolved prior to the closing of the -- well, the fiscal year will have closed, but we have until the 15th to actually vote items that need resolution for the fiscal '18 cycle. Just wanted to draw your attention to the most recent issue of City and Town, which I'm sure people read cover to cover, but for those interested in municipal finance, it does have a great article entitled "The Mechanics of Motor Vehicle Excise." So, I feel like this is prefacing a joke, but it's really not. There really is the mechanics of motor vehicle excise, and it is a very good overview of excise, motor vehicle excise tax generally, but it also gives you a bit of a historical perspective, which is kind of critical in understanding why motor vehicle excise is a fluctuating revenue number for us. But I should point out, and the reason I tell you this, is I should point out that our Finance Director, almost word for word, has been talking about motor vehicle excise over the last few months, certainly as part of the budget process, and why we track it and are starting to track it so carefully. So, it's, number one, a really good predictor of the economy, and it can also sort of foretell economic turn down, but I encourage you to read it. Something that Tony's been talking about quite a bit, and it's kind of good. We've spent a lot of effort trying to parse out motor vehicle excise and what it's made up of, why it's going up, why it might be going down, and we put a lot of faith in some of that data. So, at least that's been recognized on a state level, too, not necessarily our work, but what we do. Just an update, we're finalizing the contract with the engineering firm VHB to finish the design work on Elm Street. They are ready to go on that. Once designed, the road will be rebuilt fairly completely, as you know, with improved drainage, sidewalks, and lighting, and if it all goes according to the schedule laid out by VHB, the design and right-of-way work will be completed in May of 2019, so a little less than a year from now, and that procurement will go out for the construction itself. So, assuming a good construction season, we'll actually have a finished product or a close-to-finished product in December of 2019, and that will be a long-awaited improvement there. We're also sort of on a parallel track, working with the owners on First Street. First Street is not a public road, but we are working with them to try to get sewer installed for their businesses, and then also getting the road repaved. So, we're hoping that those, Elm Street and First Street mesh together. That's very helpful for a construction process, obviously, so that'll do both parties well, the town and the owners on First Street. So, we're working with them quite closely. We met, excuse me, met with a firm, design firm, Favorman Design Consultants, and they are brought in by the Commonwealth pursuant to a grant application or a grant, wayfinding grant that we had applied for, and over the next couple of months, we'll be looking to put together a small committee, actually, probably not a tiny committee, but not a huge committee, of people that are interested in reviewing design ideas for town branding and wayfinding. The end product for that will be a template that we can use to format our own wayfinding signs, town parks, historic areas, town buildings, or whatever else we might put up a sign for. So, it's designed to give some coherency, excuse me, to all of the various signs we have. It does not apply, obviously, to highway signs or the green and white signs that you see pointing the direction to West Bridgewater, Halifax, or so forth, so. So, that is in the works, and judging by the -- some of the preliminary work that he's put together and some of the work that he's put together for other towns, I think the group that was in the meeting with him was quite excited to get going on that project. So, that's a good thing. Also, I'll just note that although nobody's mentioned it, we've very purposely not put a sign up in front of the Academy Building because we've been waiting for this process in order to be completed, for us to place the first sign that's -- that is pursuant to our new wayfinding template, so to speak, out front. So, the council will have approval. You'll probably be given a couple of different design ideas, a couple of different sets of design ideas, and you'll be asked to choose which one we -- the town actually goes with, We continue to work on the Opportunity Zone program. We are, right now, awaiting mostly the Treasury Department's definitions and the Treasury Department's regulations on how the Opportunity Zone program will work. This isn't applicable so much to us as to developers and people who are looking to avoid capital gain, realizing their capital gain tax. So, those regulations, we are told today, will probably come out later in calendar year 20 -- sorry, yes, later in calendar year 2018. So, we'll continue to be prepared, and we'll be nimble and ready to jump on that very quickly. The Commonwealth is putting together some promotional materials. As you probably know, the Opportunity Zone program is available to all 50 states, and so it's designed to free up something close to a trillion dollars' worth of capital and plow it into areas that qualify for that, those improvements. So, our zone, I didn't mention last time, our zone runs roughly down the east side of Central Square to Plymouth, then down Plymouth to Great Hill Drive. Great Hill Drive kind of jumps over the tracks over to Summer Street, then to Grove, and then back to Central Square. So, I've got a map that we can certainly put up online, but I can share with you. It's mostly made up of Bridgewater State property, but there are some, a number of sort of neighborhoods, and certainly in the Central Business District, a number of properties that could be targeted for good development. And because it encompasses BSU, we're working quite closely with them, obviously, to see how we could both benefit from the inclusion of BSU in that Opportunity Zone. Our strategic planning process begins in earnest this week with internal meetings with a consultant and a survey firm. We're developing a comprehensive survey, which can be delivered to residents in a number of different formats, digital, phone, variety of different ways, all designed to solicit opinions on a wide variety of town issues. Once that is, once we go through that process internally, then the Strategic Planning Committee will consider a draft survey, and once approved, we can release that, and the firm will collect the data that comes from that, and that data will come back to us, and we can work with the Strategic Planning Committee to plot a strategic direction, which is the whole point of a strategic planning process. So, that is getting underway. We had a meeting today, just to keep you updated, we had a meeting today with the Massachusetts School Building Authority representatives. A number of them came down, mostly to go over in, with some detail, the expectations that they have and that, and also expectations we have for the feasibility phase at the Mitchell School. It was a productive meeting. We had our owner's project manager at the meeting. We also had our designer at the meeting, so the team is well in place, and I'm actually quite confident that the team has a lot of experience doing similar projects. So, I think we're off to a great start there, so I'm quite confident in the team that's been put together. We did receive, I mentioned this last week, but it bears repeating, we received grant funding commitment from the Commonwealth under its Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant Program, and we will begin work on that. We're pretty close to bringing on the consultant that will be doing that work, and that, obviously, the work will put us in a better position, not only to plan for weather changes, storms, power outages, you name it, but it also, in a practical sense, puts us in a better position to secure other capital grant funding through state and even the federal government. So, we're looking forward to that. And I will end only by saying that, repeating what I repeat at every meeting, we do have some pretty important board and committee openings that need to be filled. Conservation Commission, Board of Health, Finance Committee, Open Space Committee, Planning Board, ZBA, Water and Sewer Board are just a few, but we are looking for volunteers for those, and if anybody's interested, just reach out to my office, and I'm happy to, happy to meet with you and see where you fit in. If you don't have a particular, haven't chosen a particular committee, and if you have one in mind, that's fine, too. Just come on in, and we'll talk about it and get you through the process. That's what I have for now.
Thank you, Michael. Questions for Mr. George?
Present through you to the town manager. Going on the theme of power, so two weeks and a half ago roughly, Walnut Street lost power again. That has been habitual problem for a long time. It is something that I brought up early on but haven't followed up on. To my recollection, we have never been given any type of answer and/or plan by National Grid to address that recurring problem. What are our next steps to address that?
I did, you had asked me that via email, I think, and I did reach out to National Grid, asked them to put together a whole history of outages in the area, in Bridgewater for that matter, and they said they would absolutely do that, and they were unaware of the most, or at least our rep was unaware of the most recent outage. So, he was, he was gonna look into that, and he's happy to come to a meeting and go through the concerns that we have, and obviously, listen to the counselor's concerns. So, that's in the works.
Yeah, that's, as we know, that's not new, and for the most part, it usually would happen in the wintertime for various reasons, but now it seems like if we have winds over 15 miles an hour, they're losing power. And, you know, to my recollection, I don't know if anyone on the -- it's in fairness for those residents that we need to address that. Thank you.
Other questions for the town manager? Mr. Wood?
Through you. Two questions. School Street was pretty well-packed with cars today. Are we gonna see meters before the beginning of school? Good question. That is the plan. Our return date for the bid, I believe, is July 2nd, so we'll analyze whatever bids we get, proposals we get, and make a decision very soon after that. What's spelled out in the procurement is that our expectation is that there'll be a program up and running, I believe it's actually August 1st. If not, it's the middle of August. So, to answer your question, yes.
All right. And the second question is, I constantly drive by skips, and there doesn't seem to be any action there. The road was opened up a few weeks ago, but nothing else. Is there anything that the town is holding up the project on at this point?
No, I talked to the building inspector last week, or week before last. He's signed off on all the rough, and I got correspondence from the licensee's attorney that they, that they were going to begin indoor updates or begin finishing off the inside, and then also begin work on the parking lot. That hasn't happened, and I, based on the inaction and I, what I think is the council's desire, I think a license revocation hearing would be in order, so if that's --
So, I'd like to make that a motion, that we put a license revocation hearing on the agenda for the August meeting?
I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Wood, seconded by Mr. Fitzgibbon. Discussion on that? None? Perfect. Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Against? So, the --
August.
August.
August meeting, yeah. That should give enough time to get notices out to --
Sure, certainly.
Give enough time to get stuff done.
Okay. Other questions for the town manager?
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a question for Mr. Dutton. Actually, it's concerning a licensing matter with respect to the Greyhound Tavern on Broad Street, and I had actually communicated with your office back in May upon learning that it was fairly widely known that a change in ownership and management control of the establishment had been, as I understood it all, but effectively concluded. And I was informed by your office in May, there was some mid-May or late-May, that you had, in fact, received word from the tavern's attorney that paperwork would be forthcoming and that the council would have an opportunity to approve that. Are you aware of any further developments or any reason for which we have not heard about that yet?
I am not, but I can certainly check.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Gallagher. Thank you, Mr. President. To the town manager, I have a couple of things, Mike. Some of them, I think, are very easy. They might all be easy, I don't know. First one, the fountain out front. We got the 4th of July next week. We got some hot weather coming later this week. When will, will that be flowing nice red, white, and blue water by the end of the week, or what's the status on that?
It will be flowing before July 4th, I can tell you that. We're just waiting on word as to whether or not we can turn it on on Thursday or Friday, or if we have to wait till Monday, but it will be gone.
Thank you.
And the reason, the reason it's down, just so people know, we had to put another coat of sealant on the inside, so that, that's why it was down.
Okay, the second item, I guess I ask you what you think, and maybe I can put this on the agenda for a discussion item for us, is the, on Spring Street, we have the old, I think it's the Highway Barn that's just there. I don't know if we have any plans of what we want to do. Do we need that for storage, or what's in there can be stored elsewhere? Or what kind of plan going forward could we, could we use that lot, if you will, for? You know, if we're gonna go forward with paid parking, that might be a good thing, I think, but, I mean, I'd like to see that torn down and something developed there as far as maybe, I mean, not housing perhaps, but maybe something else, but I just didn't know if you, and you're, I know you have a lot of projects going on, whether in your, in your mind, you have an idea of what you'd like to see happen to that piece of property?
That's a great question. It does, we're almost certain that the building actually does have to come down because it's structurally unsound. We're, hopefully, we'll do a structural analysis of that sometime this summer, but at least one piece of that we know has to come down. Unfortunately, there are items in there. Most of it is stuff that can be thrown out. We had, we've already taken a good amount of that out of there and thrown it away. We had, we've already taken a good amount of that out of there and thrown it away, but there are some fire department pieces of equipment in there that are, that need a new home, that we don't have a new home for just yet. But ultimately, I would tend to agree with you, the building is not, not in great condition, and we'll get that structural analysis done and know exactly what needs to be done.
Mr. Gallagher, if I might interrupt, just to follow up on your question. Will that involve an environmental assessment? Because it was a highway to Barn, and who knows what's underneath the ground there?
It will likely at some point involve an environmental assessment. I'm not sure if tearing it down itself would require that assessment, but certainly anytime we do something, whether it's building there or improvements, it would require that.
Thank you.
Okay. But that is our, it is the town's property, that space, and that, explain to me the roadway that leads to the cable studio and the landing. Is that just an easement, a right-of-way for everybody, sort of, or?
Correct. It's all, all of that is town property. So the BTV has leased that, the old highway, piece of the old Highway Barn there, and they've obviously done a good job reconstructing it, but that's, that is all town property, right down to the town landing, which is at the river.
Okay. And the final thing I have is my resolution that was passed, became effective January 5th, and that's the mobile, the mobile station property, which I think has been approved by the Economic Development Committee, you know, to move forward with acquiring that land. Is there any movement on that at all, either privately or publicly?
One of the items I didn't mention is that you'll be seeing an eminent domain ordinance, or an eminent domain order, actually, I should say, on your agenda for next week.
Excellent.
For first reading, two weeks from now, for first reading.
Thank you.
Other questions for the Town Manager? Mr. Colomodos?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to clarify Mr. Gallagher's point about, we should probably be clear on what that measure, was it a resolution or an order?
Resolution.
I don't know that, I'm not sure that it said, do we know, anyone know offhand what it said? It didn't say we will acquire. It said, I think it was softer language than that.
Explore, explore, yes.
Right. I just want to clarify that, that we didn't order...
There's no order.
Right. We didn't order the Town Manager to, you know, proceed with eminent domain on mobile, on the former mobile station. Thought we should be clear on that. Last, I guess, last meeting, you informed us of your plans to allocate Chapter 90 money to two specific projects. One was a major road infrastructure on Spruce Street, right? And then something to do with the embankment for the Bridge Street Bridge, near the East Bridgewater Line. And you informed us that the vast majority of our, not Chapter 90 monies will be used for those, just those two projects, and so we're left with not a whole lot else, you know, $5,000 is it, for all other needs. Have you looked into how, how we might address maintenance needs, never mind, you know, road and sidewalk improvements? Have you?
So short-term, I can tell you what we've done. Short-term, we're looking at mitigation funding that the Planning Board has required of a number of different developments. That's how Cherry Street got paved, that's how drainage got done on Cherry. But there are other smaller mitigations that have come in to offset some smaller projects. So we're looking at crack sealing. Ron's looking at doing a lot of crack sealing, which is if we can't do something immediately, we've got to crack seal. So, so that's short-term. Long-term, we're going to do a more comprehensive analysis of all the roads based on the Weston and Sampson study. We're going to see where they stand now. We're not going to have Weston and Sampson come back at this point. They've been back twice, one to do the original study, one to do the update. Based on what we know, we've done since the update, we can update the plan overall. And then once we know what we have in front of us, we'll, we'll know, we can put the dollar figures to it, because we've got very specific bid pricing for the various recommendations on the various roads. So we should be able to put together a package and at least begin to show the community and to begin to show the council, you know, what kind of monies we're looking at to actually get the roads in decent shape. We're not looking to be the Cadillac of roads, quite frankly, but, but just to get the roads in decent shape. So that, I put together a timeline for that. I don't, off the top of my head, remember what that timeline is. It brings us, brings us through, basically brings us through January, so that the council can then make decisions about how, how we want to, if we want to fund it and how we want to fund it, based on an April election.
Right. So kind of an overarching view of where do we go from here, long-term, short-term?
We've got to put together all of the detail in order to give you just sort of that 30,000-foot view, so.
Right. One more thing. I'm not sure if this is appropriate, but I was wondering if you could describe the application for a variance, I believe it is, on Grove Street, which is right opposite, can't remember that cross street there, but a couple lots in from Bedford is a...
There was...
For ZBA.
Yep. There was, Mr. Pascal filed, or a company that he's associated with, I can't remember who, but filed for an application for use variance to build, I believe it was 38 units on a, I would say roughly a two-acre, two-plus acre lot. That went to the ZBA. I think there was some discussion of that, but that's been held over for future, future ZBA date as well.
Right. Okay. Thank you. That's it. Thanks.
Mr. Souza?
Tom Manager, through you. Several little things. I actually do watch the rerun on some of these meetings, and it left me having only half of an answer, so I'm going to ask for the rest of it this evening. Elm Street, we talked about how we were going to pay for it once it was completed, and the answer I got was, six months from the day that it's completed, the first payment will be due. I did the math, and it came out to $34.7 million in new construction to come up with $600,000 in taxes, okay? So I'm saying is, how many lots, I asked the same question last time, didn't have a straight answer. How many lots are available, and what plans are currently being either talked about or permitting at this time for construction at that site?
This is a good example of when I should not give you an answer off the top of my head, and I think maybe what I should do is ask our finance director to give you, you know, a complete breakdown of how, how the finances work, both the planned improvement on existing open lots, in, we've already captured some new growth in that area, based on construction that's happened in this calendar year, and then we've got a roughly $30 million planned improvement coming along. So, but I think, in fairness, I'd ask him to come in, and it sort of would be the, a good bookend to the discussion we had on the diff, so I can have him come in and do a comprehensive review of that.
That's good, because a few people asked me on that one as well, and they'd be interested. One more thing, Broad Street development, Mr. Pascal, we talked about the type of building he was going to build, and I understand that a committee was looking at changing the amount of housing units per acre from 16 to 26 with special permitting. Can we get a little explanation on that?
Sure. That's, that's actually when former President Fitzgibbon's put together that, that sort of ad hoc committee to look at, you know, potential for that section of Broad Street, we started out that process by committing that we weren't going to do anything for one, we couldn't do anything for one particular person, that whatever we planned for the central business, or whatever we planned for that section of Broad Street was going to have to be something that we could live with throughout the whole Central Business District. So in your, for first reading in your agenda tonight, our proposed changes to Section 19 of the zoning bylaws, which is mixed-use Central Business District. So the proposals, and they'll be vetted more with, with community and economic development, and then, and then again at the council level and the Planning Board level, but I think that the plan there is to give sort of bonus points, so that if you, if you do certain things that the town finds beneficial, that that could qualify you for additional units over and above the underlying 18 units per acre threshold that exists now. So just as an example, you know, if you, if you, or transfer of development rights, so if you, you know, if there was a piece of property that had, you know, three units on it, and it was particularly desirable to the town for open space, as an example, if you owned that, you could, you might be able to transfer that, those development rights for those units into a different spot, and be able to increase your density for that reason. So any, there were a number of items listed in the amendments that, that are outlined, but essentially, the idea was if we're going to have an increase in, in density, then there had to be either offsetting transfer of development rights or an offsetting benefit to the town in order to get that, that higher density. But that's, that's part of, those are all part of the amendments that'll work their way through, through the process.
Right. My main concern on that is if you put 26 units per acre, okay, he also owns a property across the street, he can end up with three buildings if he wants, but he could have two buildings, where's the parking going to come from? He's going to have businesses all on the first floor, he's going to go up five stories, because there's no other way he's going to be able to afford the space, all right? So he's going to go up five stories. Where are they going to park?
I think part of the, part of the zoning changes that are proposed aren't specific to his, his project, so if the zoning amendments pass, he has to come in and provide a demonstration to the Planning Board that he can fit in whatever required parking there is, and also the square footage that's going to be required for whatever density, and the commercial space that's, that's going to be required. So, so that, that onus is on him. We don't, you know, we're, our role is to set out the parameters within which he can, you know, build whatever he wants to build, but he's got to build within those zoning parameters. I guess that's the best way.
One more question on that one. How many parcels of land are available in the downtown district for that type of zoning?
That's one I'd have to, I mean, it's, it's all of the Central Business District.
The buildings all over the Central District. Okay. We'll have to work on that one. We've got the Elm Street, we've got that one, that one, that one, that one. Oh. This one here, I'm going to discuss with you later. That was the training session. But there is one more little thing. On March 3rd, we had a storm. Number of trees fell down all over town. Main Street, five houses in from the West Bridgewater Town Line, a tree fell over, blocking the sidewalk and a driveway. The neighbor came over and rescued his neighbor by cutting the tree off of his driveway, clearing the sidewalk. The town came down and cleared off all the branches. March 3rd. The stump is still there. Okay? Now, we keep hearing that the Highway Department is very busy, they don't have the manpower. You heard me a while back talk about some constituent tell me that he saw the tree warden, only because that was the sign that was on the truck, smoking and listening to a radio in the middle of the workday. Since then, I've had several other people come in with the same kind of comments. Okay. I hate to think that's really happening, and one of the most disturbing ones that I had was a constituent come in and say, Frank, how long does this person have for lunch? Because I'd bet you he's taking an hour and a half or more at a particular address from time to time. Please look into it, okay? Maybe instead of him doing all that stuff, he can come get the stump and take care of some of the other problems we have. We talked about that once before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Souza. Any other questions for the Town? Mr. Colomodos?
I, I just want to make sure we don't disparage the good name of our tree warden, who I believe is a volunteer. I'm just, just to be really clear, I'm not saying you didn't make it clear, Mr. Souza, but our tree warden is a volunteer, Bill Maltby.
Correct.
And that, I want to be clear that that's not the person who's been alleged to be slacking off. If he is slacking off, he's not being paid, so. Okay, that's, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Colomodos. Any other questions for the Town Manager? Seeing none, having none myself. Moving on to committee reports. House of Wood?
The Budget and Finance Committee met tonight on a number of things you'll see in future agendas, because the Finance Committee still has to meet. But one thing I wanted to point out again, and to remind everybody, we are still looking at the free cash policy. I don't think anyone... I had to lean back to see the shaking of the head. No one has offered any amendments, so this is the third request, so if there's no, no request from the council, and the finance director doesn't have anything, we're just going to let the subject drop. And that's the end of the report. Thanks.
Mr. Colomodos?
Is it appropriate to ask if, and if the committee has made any amendments?
We have no amendments to make.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Loesch, did I see you hand go for committee report?
Yeah, I was just going to give it an update, that the Rules and Procedures Committee hasn't met, just because they might be shifting members. So once we have the new roster, then we will continue our monthly meetings, if I'm still on the committee.
Anyone else? I will see now that my, my email's restored, we should be getting that information out for the various committee appointments. Okay. Moving on to legislation for action. We have Resolution R-FY18-005, which was amended on September 2018.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbon, seconded by Mr. Dennis Gallagher. Any discussion, gentlemen? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Moving on to old business. Ordinance D-FY18-011, zoning ordinance to amend the Elm Street retail overlay district. Oh, Town Manager, want to give a brief on this? It's very brief. Table it.
Sure. You have, you have in front of you, I believe, Ordinance D-FY1811. The, the Community and Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board have recommended, they recommended this at their first hearing, recommended that the council not take up this particular one. If you recall, the FY1811 and FY18008 were very similar in intent and purpose, and so the joint committees preferred to take up 008 and make amendments to that, and so they're recommending that you not entertain FY18011.
Motion to table indefinitely.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbon, seconded by Mrs. Loesch. Discussion? Mr. Colomodos?
The Community and Economic Development Committee just saw no need for this, basically. The explanation within the ordinance itself says, "The proposed legislation reflects the recommendation of the committee, should the town fail to enact a ban on retail establishments." The town has adopted a ban on retail establishments, so we didn't think it necessary.
Noted. All right, so those in favor of tabling this indefinitely?
Aye.
Aye. Those against? Good. Moving on to Ordinance D-FY18-008. Sounds very familiar. Zoning ordinance, Elm Street overlay usage.
Mr. President, this, this is the one that the Planning Board and Community and Economic Development Committee had decided to move forward. They moved forward based upon, or they made, sorry, they made amendments to this proposed ordinance based upon some comment that they received at the first public hearing. At the second public hearing, they made some minor changes, but what's in front of you is the recommendation of both the Planning Board and Community and Economic Development. So very generally, it, it adds definitions to the ordinance, which are necessary and proper. They also voted essentially to, as you've heard previously, to limit the number of marijuana establishments relative to the recreational business to two, which is the number of medical marijuana facilities. marijuana facilities in town. So that, that very basically is, is what this does. Keep in mind, this is a zoning ordinance. This is not a licensing ordinance, so that the law is, is relative to land use, not, not the activity necessarily. So it sets out criteria for special permit approval and sets out some application requirements. So it, as I say, is the recommendation of both the Planning Board and the Community and Economic Development Committee.
Okay. And what we're doing here is, first, we're going to have a vote to accept it or not these amendments made. And then the next step, with whatever method we take on this or whatever avenue we take to accept or not accept, is then simply to vote the amended version and whatever version we have to advertising. Nothing's going into any kind of effect at all today, other than putting it out there for public consumption for a, a meeting to be held later. So I wanted to put that out there and clarify that. So, having said that and read a couple of times, at least, the amendments, now it's time for discussion amongst the council. Anybody have any questions in regards to these amendments?
Well, we need a motion.
Need a motion to put it on the table. So I'll make a motion that we.
Thank you, sir.
I'll make a motion, we put it on the table for discussion.
Seconded by Mr. Fitzgibbon's.
I didn't second it.
No, that wasn't you speaking? I'll wait for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. George. Mr. Gallagher, would you like to open up the discussion?
Yeah, let's start some discussion on this. And I, I did watch the, the tape. The link was sent to me and I watched the tape of the joint meeting last week.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yep.
Could I make a motion to amend as indicated? And then we can talk about the amendments? Or do you want to talk about the main motion first before we talk about the amendments?
Well, I was getting to that, yeah. I have amendment, there's amendments to be made.
Sorry, are we just discussing or are we voting on sending it to advertising and then making amendments?
Both.
Well, if it's to discuss, then we can't make an amendment because there's, we're just in discussion, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So.
I lost my train of thought. We're out.
You can vote to make the amendments and then have a discussion about the amendments that you're voting on making.
Okay.
Procedurally speaking.
So if Mr. Gallagher withdraws his motion, maybe I can just get it teed up, right?
I was putting it on the table for discussion.
Would you withdraw your motion?
You wanted to put it on the table for a vote.
Would you withdraw it?
I'll withdraw. Okay.
Would Mr. George?
I'll withdraw.
For a second.
See where this goes.
All right, so I'd make a motion to send ordinance D-FY-18008 to advertising.
Second for discussion.
I'd make a motion to amend ordinance D-FY-18008 as indicated.
Second for discussion.
And now we're into the amendment, so I defer to Mr. Gallagher at that point in time.
Mr. Gallagher.
We're discussing the amendment, so the first amendment that I see, and I think I have the amended version as everybody else does, where the third whereas, it says retail is crossed out and it says recreational, and then it says locations. I believe that the word locations should say establishments and not locations. That's my understanding, because we already have our locations. We have our medical locations. So the whereas allows local control to limit the number of recreational establishments. Remember, from my understanding, reading, reading and discussing this before, establishments mean the work that's going on inside, cultivation, testing, or manufacturing, not locations. I don't think the word locations need to be there, in my view. That's what I'm, so my amendment, so I would, I would amend to make that establishments, not locations, if that's appropriate.
Yes.
So, through you to probably the town attorney, for zoning, is it locations? This is not, this has nothing to do with licensing.
Right.
So for zoning, it would have to be a location.
Correct. And, and I think that's probably what their intent was. It seems to me, because they, they don't even use like a term like RMD for medical locations. It seems to me like they're just saying essentially that it allows local control to limit the number of these recreational, whatever you want to call them. In our, in our ordinance, we call them establishments, and we have three of them, cultivators, testing facilities, and product manufacturers. I don't think that the statement is inaccurate. I think 94G does allow local control to limit the number of recreational locations. I mean, we're, we're zoning here, so we're saying this location can be a marijuana establishment and this location can be a marijuana establishment. So I, I, I don't think it makes a practical difference either way, to be entirely honest with you. I think it's more, that's more semantics. I, I don't think it, it really makes a huge difference.
Because my, my point would be, if we were talking about licensing, I would agree with what you're saying on establishments, where for zoning, at least from my understanding, has to do with locations, physical, you know, we're, we're talking about physical parcels, things of that nature. But again, I don't want to get into semantics either.
Well, they're referring to the, the law. They're referring to the marijuana law, the 94G, as it starts out.
Yeah.
And 94G does not use the word locations.
Right, so you.
The word establishment.
You could actually, I mean, if, if you really wanted to, you could say whereas MGL 94G section 32A3, which I don't have in front of me, and you could be very specific and lay out the rest of the statute, but what the rest of the statute essentially says is it allows for local control of the amount of marijuana establishments equal to RMDs or medical marijuana dispensaries. So I, I think you could say that and then you could do another whereas line that says, whereas the overlay district is intended to limit the number of specific recreational locations equal to the number of medical locations. But I think the premise is still the same. I don't think it changes the premise.
Right, but if, if the word locations stays in there, okay?
Yep.
Wouldn't that create the possibility of other businesses coming in to addition to the two medical locations we have to do the establishment's work? Like cultiv, so if we don't change this?
Yeah.
We, we could allow another two facilities to come into Bridgewater, if there's room in zoning down there for that, to do a cultivation, testing, or manufacturing.
Right. The, the, the rest of it basically says that you're limiting the number of special permits allowed to two and to allow no more than two marijuana establishments. So I, I think practically, you're, you're probably right, because you can take an establishment and say, okay, you're, you're given a special permit to do these couple of things. And for right now, we only have two applicants and they just also so happen to be the medical dispensaries. So if they get the two special permits and they do two uses within them, that's it. It's over with.
But they may not. They, you may get another business to say, well, we want to do the cultivation. And, and I thought that the whole discussion we had last winter was to limit the number of two locations, and we have the two locations. Now, these two locations may want to do the cultivation, testing, and manufacturing.
See, that goes to your, all of your intent. So that has nothing, that's not a legal question. That's whatever your intent in doing these ordinances. So there's not a right or wrong answer to that. It depends on what you all want.
But the word locations leaves the door open, in my opinion, leaves the, leaves the door open for other businesses, other buildings to be built.
Okay.
For this purpose. If we changed it to establishments.
So you're saying if one of the medical marijuana facilities determines, I do not want to use, I do not want to go for a special permit to do this, and they're operating as a medical marijuana facility, and then you have the other one operating as a medical marijuana facility in addition to a marijuana establishment operating two of the, the functions, you're saying then a third could come in and get, and it, get the second special permit to run a location that is a marijuana establishment? And I think that is correct, yes. My answer to that hypothetical is yes.
Is that what we want? I guess the question is, is that what it is?
That's up to you guys.
Good question, Mr. Wood.
A bit of business before we get too deep into the discussion. So, so as you can see, my name's at the top, introduced by, it says November 7th, but I wrote it long before then. I think the first reading was actually in, in August. There's nothing about what we have in front of us that was my intention. My intention, as I've said clearly, was to allow two retail establishments, most likely the marijuana dispensaries that are there today, to sell retail marijuana. So we're clear now that there is a ban, that's not going to happen. So there's no retail sales in Bridgewater at all. But this no longer represents what I intended. So one of the things I'd like to do is I'd like to have someone else take up the sponsorship of this measure. Maybe Mr. Sousa wants to take it or someone else wants to take it, but it's no longer mine, so I'd like to have my name taken off the measure.
Wouldn't have to be reintroduced, wouldn't it?
I don't think so, because the, the measure itself has been introduced. My intention is to stop, stop the debate. I could have done that by simply saying I'm going to withdraw it. I could have done that. I'm not doing that. I'm just asking someone else to take up the sponsorship on this. And, and I agree to that transition.
I actually think that would be okay, and I think that would be preferential for the purpose of process to a withdrawal, obviously, because you're the sponsoring party. You could move to withdraw. So I think that, that would be preferential to do it the other way.
But I, I don't want to withdraw it. I want the.
Understood.
I want the discussion to go on. So if someone will just replace my name with theirs, then we just, theirs, then we just move on.
Can I ask you a question? What, what, what has changed and how did it change if you weren't involved in, in this? You, you.
I wasn't involved in this amendment writing at all.
But you sponsored something. The, the. Whereas what you sponsored.
The lines in green that are, are erased, that are struck out was mine.
And where did all these amendments come from? From us or from the joint committee?
Mr. Colomboos can answer that for you.
I believe it was the Community and Economic Development Director who recommended those changes to the Planning Board and the Community and Economic Development Committee. And we considered them and didn't accept quite all of them, but accepted most of them and are bringing it back to the full council.
The director and your committee brought this to, to where we are today.
Right.
One or two paragraphs from what Mr. Wood is asking to be removed from this.
Just a point of information.
Yes, Mrs. Loesch.
Yeah, to that point, it was based on conversations that we've had.
Right.
In the two meetings, to then go to.
Right.
The director.
Right.
And to the town attorney, to come back with the language.
That's a good clarification. Right. Redirected her amendment.
Yes, exactly. She didn't make this. We had language that we could not articulate, and we wanted the professional language to be prudent, so that's how we got to this amendment. But Mr. Wood is not part of the CEDC, nor is he the CEDC director for the town, nor is he on the planning board, so he did not make these edits.
Back to Mr. Wood, asking to be removed from this. I don't know what that process is. Is there something formal here?
I, I would do it as a motion. I frankly have never seen it, but I, I, I don't think it's improper to do. I don't think it changes the procedural relevancy or legality of the process for the ordinance. So I, I mean, I, I think it may be a bit out of order under Robert's rules, but it's up to you all to decide if, if a withdrawal or, or an exchange of sponsorship is, is a better option.
Okay.
I guess I'm wondering if anyone wants to pick up sponsorship?
Can we, can we table this to the next meeting, hoping to pick up a new sponsor and come back? I don't know.
Or we can do it now, according to the town council, right?
You could.
He's not stopping us. So.
But someone has to volunteer to be there.
Right, so.
Okay, I, to move this along, I will volunteer as tribute to take this, this order and continue the process.
Mrs. Loesch has volunteered to become the new introductor of this ordinance, so I suppose we should vote on whether or not we should do that, so.
So make a motion to make Ms. Loesch the sponsor of the ordinance.
Motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbon, seconded by.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Wood. No discussion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Against?
Overwhelmingly.
Everybody write in her name.
A-I-S-Z.
Any further discussion, Mr. Wood?
On the amendment?
Since you have the, on the amendment, yes.
On the amendment, yes. So I, I have to assume that everyone here has read Mass General Law 94G, which covers the marijuana law that was voted and then amended in July of last year, I think it was. And I hope that everyone's read 935 CMR 500, which is the rules and regulations promulgated by the commission, Cannabis Commission in April. And hopefully, everybody has also read what an ISO 17025 lab is, because that has meaning also. So, to get started, so the language in the amendment has language that differs from the CMR regulations. The CMR regulations changed from a marijuana testing facility to the final language was an independent testing lab. Independent testing lab that's covered under ISO 17025, which is an international body which gives credentials to labs when they fulfill certain standards. It's a very professional lab when you have that credentials. In the town of Bridgewater, a lab like that could be, have very expensive equipment inside, which is a taxable, it's called personal property tax. It also is going to have offer jobs that are in, in the upper thresholds. So it's going to have technicians and others, good employment in the town of Bridgewater. And I raise this because I'm not sure why we would try to limit business in the town of Bridgewater. We have eliminated retail sales. A lab cannot do retail sales. A lab cannot do exchanges. A lab is not going to hand out stuff out the back door. Getting an ISO 17025 credentialed lab is very important. There's about 60,000 of them in the United States. It's going to be a professionally-run office building. It could exist in any business district in Bridgewater. I don't know if there's one making a petition for Bridgewater, but one could. One could make a petition in the central business district, what I call the eastern business district, because there's not a name for it, I don't think, out, out near Halifax. The southern business district, down by Silva Engineering, has quite a bit of property that doesn't perk and doesn't lend itself toward a lot of retail establishments, but maybe a lab in a, in an office building like that would, would make sense in other locations. So I, I raise this because we've always, and I've said this before, we've had the, the reputation of being bad for business in Bridgewater. Councilor Sousa has said this many times. And this is an example of where we put it under an umbrella that's kind of recreational, but it's not recreational, it's a lab. It's a professional office. And we've, the language in the amendment limits items to Elm, the Elm Street overlay first, and secondly, it limits the number of, of different establishments. So I, I think we need to talk about making some more changes here, because if we can't have things like labs in our, in our town, then I don't know what kind of business we're trying to attract. It's a professional establishment. And, and there's other language in here about medical or marijuana establishment, so the, the definition of marijuana establishment is, again, limited. I've been told that we can do that because it's a, it's a ordinance and not a licensing piece. But if you look at the CMR 500, the definition of that has a number of other things, including craft cultivation. Now, I don't know if you've read what craft cultivation is, but it's basically a co-op of neighbors and friends that form a limited liability partnership and are doing cultivation on a much smaller scale than distributing out into the commercial world. So we have craft breweries in town. I don't know why we wouldn't also support maybe a craft, craft establishment. So the, the idea of limiting the number of businesses that are allowed in, in the town of Bridgewater limits Bridgewater's business. We know that limiting Bridgewater business has, has a negative effect on our overall budget process, right? And limiting the number of professional establishments in the town of Bridgewater furthers the opinion that Bridgewater is not friendly to business. So I'm hoping as the discussion continues that we think about those, those points. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Mr. Colomboos, I saw your hand go up a couple of times. I don't know if it was for the renaming. Okay. Other questions on the amendments to this?
I guess.
Yes, Mr. Gallagher?
I guess the point that I made is that when we had this discussion last winter, I think we, as a council, came to an agreement that Dairy Wellness and the other one there, ACS, I think it is, were the two medical establishments that we had in town, and the, the ban allowed for them to come in and cultivate. ban allowed for them to come in and cultivate, if they wanted to, for retail sales in other towns. So what I see this doing is, right, it opens up the doors for other entities to open up a new building for these, if the special permits aren't granted to the ones that are there. And I don't think that's what we initially wanted in town. I think that it's still marijuana issue, it's still the marijuana issue, it's still we're selling it to retail, and I don't have a problem with the medical facilities that are there to have the ability to cultivate, test, or manufacture, or combination of one or two of those things. I don't think they can do the testing, though.
No.
But to allow more in, I just don't think that was what we really wanted to do as a council, and that's what this ordinance does. And I do, I really do question the, all the changes that were made at the initial joint meeting, where the Economic Development Director came back and kind of rewrote the whole thing. And it doesn't meet the objective of what Counselor Wood initially wanted. So I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what we should do as a council. I mean, my amendment to change the word locations to establishments, I think, is in order, in keeping with the two, because this opens up the door for two more, in my view. So I'll just listen to what everyone else has to say, but
Thank you, Mrs. Loesch.
To be clear, the ban that we passed allows different activities to happen in any district currently. So right now, anyone can open anything, anywhere in the town. This limits it to, that's the whole purpose, to this overlay usage. So to your point, the original ordinance, it does not accomplish what we originally wanted, which is to limit it, which is what this zoning amendment is doing. And to your point about the locations, if you want to make a motion to change it to establishments, I don't think I've heard it yet.
You don't think what?
You haven't made the motion? You just keep talking about said motion? So you could make the motion, and it could pass, or it could fail.
Yeah. Mr. Fitzgibbon?
I'll let Mr. Gallagher talk.
I'll make a motion that we amend the third whereas to read Mass General Law 94G, Section 32AIIII, allows local control to limit the number of recreational establishments equal to the number of medical locations. It is therefore, and it goes on. So I'd like to change the word locations to establishments. And make that in a form of
Just in the one spot?
At the moment, we're going to, I don't know, I'm
It's referenced twice in that third whereas.
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
So, let's, how about
That was the, that was, but the word retail was taken out to amend to recreational, so I changed the word, keep recreational in, but changed locations to establishments.
Let me see if I have this. You're making, you'd like it to be, allows local control to limit the number of recreational establishments equal to the number of medical locations?
Yes.
And that's your, that's your motion?
Yes.
As worded, okay. Second for that?
Second.
Made by Mr. Gallagher, seconded by Mr. Souza. Discussion?
Question.
Question, Mr. Wood.
Where did recreational come from during the discussions and hearings? There was obviously an amendment to change.
Point of order, the discussion is on the change of words from location to establishment, not recreational.
Okay, fine. There is no definition in CMR 500, nor is there a definition in 94G for recreational.
Point of order, Mr. President, we're not talking about the word recreational. When we get off of the amendment to the amendment, we can talk about recreational. We're talking about changing locations to establishment as the amendment to the amendment. That is my point of order. How would you rule?
Yes, that's what our discussion is, changing locations to establishments.
Thank you.
So it's limited to that, yes. Hearing, none, so we're
I have a question
Okay.
to the Town Attorney about changing the word locations to establishments.
Okay, Mr. Fitzgibbon?
Can we do that here, at the council level, and then send it on to advertising? Or does it have to go back to the Planning Board and
I
and the Community Economic Development Committee for a new hearing?
I don't think it needs to go back for a new hearing, because I'm not exactly sure that it changes anything. It's, the term establishments and locations used in this context, I just don't know what it really changes. But I think, well, you're making it more restrictive if your intent is, you're saying, now that you're going to also change, I would assume, right, that the next thing coming is, limit the number of special permits allowed to two, and not allow more than two marijuana establishments per special permit. Are you going to somehow tweak that to fit the goal that only the two current medical marijuana facilities can obtain licenses? I guess I'm just not sure where this is going.
Somehow
I'm not understanding the intent, so I can't really advise you on it. I don't get it.
Mr. Colombotus?
Can I through you, Mr. President? Mr. Rollins, it seems in, do these wheras's have any legal standing at all? Aren't they just in there to form an argument?
Yeah, they're setting the context
Right, so they have no legal standing, we don't really need to
They don't go into the ordinance.
It's just there for argument's sake, right?
Setting the context of what you're voting on, correct.
So it's framing the argument
Correct.
for the order. So we really probably
That's why I jumped down
shouldn't spend much time on this.
That's why I jumped down to the next section, thinking how, why that's even relevant. I'm just, I guess I'm trying to figure out what we're getting at here.
Right.
So I can't answer the question until I kind of know where we're going with it.
All right. Want to keep going with that?
Yeah, we'll take a vote.
Okay, so we'll vote on changing the first recreational location to recreational facility.
Establishment.
Establishment, sorry, my mistake. Recreational establishment, in place of recreational location. So those in favor?
Can I, just more discussion?
I thought we had a second. I'm sorry.
Frank seconded it. I select a discussion. That's why we're discussing.
Okay. Further discussion? Yes, Mr. Colombotus?
I'm going to be voting no, because I don't think it's necessary to change a wheras.
We're not changing a wheras.
You are changing wheras.
Changing the language in the wheras, yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion before?
Point of information.
Yes, sir.
Through you to the Town Attorney. Does the definition recreational establishment exist in CMR 500 or 94G?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Colombotus?
Does it matter?
It depends contextually what you're looking to do within the body of the order. That's what I'm trying to focus on. I don't understand the context of the change to the wheras until I understand what you all are trying to do within the actual body of the order. If the body of the order changes to match somehow recreational establishment up above in what you're trying to do contextually, then I can give you advice on it, but I don't understand contextually what we're trying to do here. Because we're talking about a wheras clause that's setting up, this is what we did below, and this is why we did what we did below, but what you did below doesn't use the term recreational establishment at all, and I'm not sure contextually where it's going.
Mr. Gallagher, seeing his, what I'm hearing, and anybody, please correct me if I'm wrong, changing this third whereas wording in there will not affect anything within the order Are you going to get what you're going for with this motion? Or is it something within the body that you're trying to limit the businesses down there to the two existing, and somehow through this, make sure, force, or pigeonhole, or whatever term you want to put in there, to make those two be the only options to have that if they so choose?
Well, in my, in my view, right, Mr. President, I mean, in my view is, what we did last winter was exactly that. My understanding as to how we, when we had debate, we had discussion, might not be written in the language, but the discussion, the compromise that we had, was that the two facilities that are there would want to cultivate. And they were ready to, they were in here and saying that they'll need to close down, they'll need to lay off 100 people, and all that stuff. The compromise was, okay, they can cultivate. There were a lot of people that didn't even want that, but that was the compromise. So now, maybe not in this wheras, but later on in the ordinance, and we will have that discussion, because I do, I really would like to limit what they, the establishment that they do in there is limited. I absolutely do want to limit that to those two facilities, except the testing. My understanding is, they can't test.
No.
So if somebody wants to come in and open up a testing facility, I mean, that would have to be
You understand, you may be effectively
We would have to amend the zoning, we would have to, I mean, here we, here we are, as a volunteer committee, trying to create a zone, a zoning ordinance, when we're also in the middle of trying to get our whole zoning language route, I don't know where that is, and, because we appropriated $100 million, $100,000 to do that, but yet here we, that was months ago, but now we're trying, and we have another zoning ordinance later on for the Broad Street project, and we're trying to do this in a, you know, this is very detailed, this is something we need to do, as the other one coming up later. But, you know, I think that this council, in my view, from what I sat through last winter, made the compromise to allow the two facilities that are there to be able to do the cultivation. And now this seems to be, whether it's in this wheras, or in the other ordered language, or whatever, is allowing this to open up, to allow more in, and then down the road, when laws change and things happen, they can, you know, do more. We want it to be restrictive.
Thank you.
So, yes.
Mr. Colombotus?
Through you, Mr. President. Mr. Rollins, could we limit, so this essentially allows for two special permits in town. Is it within our rights as a town to limit, to say who can apply for these special permits?
No.
So we couldn't, could we peg them to a specific address?
Well, no, and I think the only way, in theory, you could, you could do it, would be that you'd be making it allowable only to the two existing medical marijuana facilities, which would probably require some pretty large revamping of what has been proposed here, I would assume, to make sure that it was carefully drawn in such a way. But that's not what this says, so.
Thank you.
Another point of information on the amendment.
On the amendment?
Yes, I don't understand the count and
The wheras amendment?
No. Are we still discussing that?
We haven't voted yet.
Okay.
All right, so let's just cut right to that. For the amendment to amend the wheras, as originally stated the last time I said it, those in favor of the amended wheras?
Aye.
Those against?
Nay.
No.
Nay. Hands up for the two gentlemen that are for this amendment as read. Hands up for those who are against it. There we go. Moving on to discussion of the amendment as read line here, and Mr.
Mine.
Sorry?
It's my
Oh, Mrs. Loesch?
I may ask a point of information about the amendment itself.
Point of information, yes, about Mrs. Loesch's
I'm confused by the count language that's used on line three. Limit the number to allow no more marijuana establishment special permit as
I didn't write this, and I certainly didn't advise that, but that came out of, I believe, the Planning Board and Community and Economic Development Committee meeting. What I think the intent was, was they were going to limit it to two special permits, and for some reason, there was some discussion about two or more types of activities that we allow of the three. They wanted to limit it to only two of those within there, because regulations only allow two of them, which is a license more convoluted to be limited to the number of special permits, and it's up to whoever goes in there, rest of this, to ensure that they get, they get it for one, two, or three. So if the licensing prevents all three from happening in the same place, then by virtue of the current regulations, it can only be two things happening there. If not, I don't know, but I think I mean, I'm just guessing.
Can I just clarify? I did see limiting the number of, of, what was it?
Establishments.
Well, uses, activities.
Activities.
Activities or uses. So that was our intent, to not allow three. Even though the state in its licensing would not allow three, that could change, so we just wanted to do belt and suspenders, and limit it to two within any special permit that's granted.
I'm sorry, back to the point of information I don't understand that.
It's for per special permit.
Right. So the petitioner comes in on the special permit, ascertains the special permit, in that process the rest of the proposed ordinance, they basically have to let the Director know that they've gotten their licensing, and these, that's at that point, there will be a check on ensuring that they're doing only two establishments, I assume, within establishments, as we define them in the ordinance, within that special permit.
Is it the boundaries of Bridgewater, or all?
No, that's Bridgewater's local control, I mean, based on this.
Yes, Mr. Fitzgibbon?
And I'm not sure, Mr. President, whether it goes to Mr. Colombotus or Mr. Rollins. So we talk about two special permits and two marijuana establishments per permit. And then we go down a little bit further, and we talk about what a marijuana establishment is. It says, a marijuana cultivator, marijuana testing facility, marijuana product manufacturer. So I guess my first question would be to Mr. Colombotus, and if he can't answer, I'll defer to the Town Attorney, was the intent of the joint meeting between the Community and Economic Development Committee and the Planning Board, that there be two places which could engage in no more than two of the businesses decided under marijuana establishment?
Yes.
So that you could be a marijuana cultivator and a testing facility, but you couldn't do manufacture. You could do a cultivator and manufacturer, but you couldn't be a testing facility, et cetera, any combination thereof.
Right.
That was, that was the intention?
No. Mr. President?
Mr. Souza?
The Cannabis Commission came out today, and they said, the reason why no one is getting their license to sell recreational marijuana is because they have not established any active testing facilities, which must be completely separate from the businesses. So here you have all three listed, and going back to Councilman Woods' statement there, that could be a third location of a second biz, type of business, just doing the testing, okay? And that's what we think we really need to make sure, that in this language, we allow that, okay? That we don't block them out, okay? We have all three types of business within the marijuana as our establishments, two establishments. And I think we have to make sure, however we do this, that we do not block that testing facility out.
Thank you, Mr. Souza, and Mr. Fitzgibbon?
I'm confused by Mr. Souza's answer to me, so if I may ask him a question through you?
Absolutely, sir.
All right, so it's my understanding, and I believe most of us might agree on this, that when we finished up our conversation about this back last December, we said we wanted two facilities that we knew we were going to have in Bridgewater, essentially to be able to sell wholesale. Is it, is what you just said to me, that we want to be able to allow, let's say, Theory Wellness to be a cultivator, manufacturer, and allow a separate facility on that same location, to Mr. Gallagher's point earlier, to be a testing facility, and allow that use as well? Is that what, this is what
Cannabis Commission said they had to be totally separate.
Right.
And that's what they said today, okay? And they're trying to establish that.
Well, you can always set up a shell corporation, et cetera, et cetera.
It could be within the same confines, but you have two It could be within the same confines, but you have two establishments, okay, here in town.
But we're only going to have two special permits to give, correct? So, if we give a special permit to a testing facility, then the second other medical place is done. It can't have a special permit. Is that... Was that the intent? I'll ask anyone on the CEDC.
No. No, they each could get two.
What it was, is in my mind, okay, was we... Two businesses that are already established, okay, are the two that are being talked about. Okay? But in the beginning, we always talked about it as if they were going to do all three. It said cultivate, test, process, whatever you want to do. Okay? That was the language that was used away from the... All the time from the beginning, until they came back out and said, "The Cannabis Commission says no. They cannot test it. Has to be totally separate." All right? So, the two businesses can only grow and cultivate. You know, cultivate, and then they will cultivate it and process it. Okay? And then be the wholesaler, the retailer on medical.
Mr. President, if I may, through you to the town attorney. We... If we adopt this as amended, Mr. Rollins, we have two special permits to give out, correct?
Correct.
And under those two special permits, they are only allowed to do... I'm going to call them functions, because establishments doesn't make sense to me. They're only allowed to do two functions of being a cultivator, a testing facility, or a product manufacturer, correct?
Correct. Yes.
If I just heard Mr. Souza correctly, it is impossible for them to be both cultivator and testing facility. It's impossible for them to be manufacturing, testing facility. Therefore, they can only be cultivator and manufacturer, and that would take up the two establishments, functions, whatever you want to call them, per special permit, correct?
Based on what he's saying, correct.
And based...
I mean, I don't have... I don't have the Cannabis Commission's regulation relative to the testing facility. But if that's accurate, that is correct.
So, we could not have... If we gave to both establishments on Elm Street a special permit, they could be a cultivator, according to what Mr. Souza characterized, the Cannabis Control Commission is saying today, they could be a cultivator and a manufacturer, and we could in no way ever in the town, unless we amended zoning, have a testing facility.
That's correct, based on the way this is written.
Thank you.
Follow-up question on that same line.
Yes, sir. Mr. Wood.
Actually, it's a... I guess it would be best as a point of information, but back to Mr. Rollins. So, the current RMDs have cultivation licenses related to medical. So, they can go out and get a cultivation license relative to recreational. Do they need a special permit from the town to do that?
Yes.
Even though they're not changing their facility?
Correct. They need a special permit from the town. That they have to be provided to the licensing authority, which is the Cannabis Commission, with proof that they have authority to do the same thing for a recreational purpose.
And so, if both go out with special permits and get licenses for recreational, in addition to their medical cultivation, we'll actually have four cultivators in town, because it'll be two medical and two recreational.
In theory, correct.
And there's no room in this language to allow a testing lab to go in anywhere else.
That's correct, based on that hypothetical. Right. Exactly.
Question from Mr. Gallagher.
I just want to be clear to clarify what Council of Fitzgibbons asked you, which you answered, that we have two medical facilities out on Elm Street. If this is approved as amended, that there are only two special permits that can be awarded. So, if one of them got both of them, the other one would get zero?
No.
No. Okay.
A special permit is... Runs with a petition that has to do with a parcel of land. This is zoning. So, you're zoning, let's say you rent parcel 38, map, whatever. You're zoning that parcel through a special permit for a particular use. These two businesses are on separate parcels. So, each would need their own special permit. Within that special permit, each one of those businesses could, under this, could do two of the activities.
And if they choose to both manufacture and, you know, the two that basically they're doing now, again, blocks out the testing.
Correct. That's right.
Now, there's a really nice testing facility and laboratory in West Bridgewater that many companies spend tens of thousands, millions of dollars a year for testing. That's just mechanical calibration underneath the ISO 17025. There are medical facilities. There's the world's second-largest medical manufacturer in Rainham that does a lot of testing. Now, they send out to microbial testing and things like that, out to the western part of the state. You're talking about tens of millions of dollars in testing, same ISO certification. There's no reason why any of those facilities can't partake in testing of marijuana. If they do, they're already ISO certified to this same standard. They could come into town with their, you know, $50, $60 million in sales and say, "We want a lab here." And what Mr. Souza's concern is, as well as maybe a few others, that we would be effectively blocking them out by allowing this.
Mr. President, I'm not really familiar with how this whole thing really works, but can anybody, any of my colleagues or the town attorney answer, if someone is a cultivator for recreational purposes, do they want to do the manufacturing as well, or are there a lot of just people that cultivate? Or does it kind of go hand in hand? Or people could just cultivate and not care about the manufacturing then?
I see that there's... These community host agreements are happening all the time now. There's some people that are just doing cultivation, some doing both, some are just doing retail. There's no rhyme or reason.
Okay. And does our host agree... What does our host agreement say?
We don't have a host agreement yet.
So, if... All right. So, when this is... Whatever happens to this, we could, you know, then this...
There's a few things holding them up, obviously.
Because of this. Because this. Because they won't negotiate with us until they get what they want. That's what we're doing here. That's what we're doing here, and that's wrong.
I don't follow.
I can tell you, I've had no discussions with anyone about this.
Well, we've had a host agreement for the medical end of it.
Yes.
And that's part of the... You know, they're going to want this, and then we'll negotiate more with them if they happen to get these special permits. So, it goes hand in hand.
Any other... Mr. Columbotes?
How does the host agreement... I don't know if this is germane or... Does the host agreement... We hold certain amount of power in the drafting, agreeing to a host agreement?
So, before we get too deep into the host agreement, because we're literally negotiating two of them right now, I would think it's much more appropriately put on an agenda for executive session, and we can have whatever discussions, but we're literally in the process of negotiating them as we speak. So, I would defer that to executive session.
Sounds like an agenda item. More discussion on the amendment before us on DFY18008?
I'd like just one more thing, and I'll make a motion. We'll see where it goes. I'd like to make a motion...
I thought you were going to say one more thing first.
I'd like to make a motion that we, on line three of the ordered, limit the number of special permits allowed. I'd like to make amendment, we change that from two to one. And to allow no more than one medical marijuana establishment. I'd like to change the wording from two to one.
I don't know if we can do that. We already gave them permits.
That's my motion.
So, the motion put on the table, limit the number of special permits allowed to one, and allow no more than two, so you keep the rest the same?
No. Change both the two.
Could you start with limit again? I'm sorry.
On the third line there, it says, "Limit the number of special permits allowed to one, and to allow no more than one marijuana establishment per special permit." It's effectively changing the two to a one.
Which... Well, okay. So, that's your motion to amend that. Is there a second? Not hearing any on that one. Sorry.
Okay.
Do you have any other motions you'd like to make?
I'm done.
Any other discussion? So, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Through you to the town attorney. I know we spent a lot of time all last summer into the fall, heading toward Christmas, discussing retail marijuana, what the town could and would do about it, et cetera. And we had a very interesting meeting in December to finally come up with... I believe we looked at each other for a little bit and said, "Well, it's five to four. It's five to four. What are we going to do? We need a six to three." So, we had a very interesting meeting where it finally got to six to three. And the intent that I took out of that meeting was that we would have the two medical facilities that would essentially be able, as I say, to grow wholesale and ship it out of town. In your legal opinion, with the amendments as offered, is that what is being accomplished through this zoning ordinance?
If both of them get the special permits, yes.
It would happen that way. I mean, if they both got it.
If they both applied.
They would both...
And they both got the special permits, and based on the way this is written, they could only do two of these things, and they intended on doing just the cultivating and the manufacturing, that exact intent would be fulfilled, based on all those hypotheticals.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood. So, last fall's exercise was many hours long, many nights long, right? There were planning board hearings. There was CE... CE... I forget all the initials. Thank you. Meetings. There were committee meetings. There were multiple meetings here at the council. And then, we came to a decision. The planning board agreed on the decision. The subcommittee agreed on the decision, and the council agreed on the decision to ban marijuana and to allow these establishments. We're now backtracking on that entire piece of work. It seems that at that point, no one could decide that they wanted to limit cultivation to the Elm Street overlay. And it was an oversight during the process that didn't put it there. And so, it could be in one of the other industrial parks, under the current language. And we went through many hearings to reach that decision. So, I don't understand why we're backtracking now to undo that decision, to redo this again. This is like our fourth attempt at banning marijuana in town.
Mrs. Loesch?
Mr. Rollins or Mr. Dunn, can you confirm what we... The ban of marijuana, was that an ordinance or a zoning ordinance?
It was a zoning ordinance.
And we only had it to ban marijuana, but it allowed it in every district of the town, correct?
It didn't... There was no actual use table. So, there's no technically allowable use, which is a whole nother legal issue, but that we don't need to get into right now. But we banned the retail sale, essentially, and allowed for these three specific things.
Correct.
Yeah.
So, are we allowing retail sale by passing this?
No.
Okay.
But we reached the agreement at that point to ban retail sales and to limit cultivation. The fact that none of the three boards decided to limit it in town is probably an oversight. But there were a lot of hours spent on that. So, I don't understand how this has come up with so many changes now to try to refix something that we all agreed on, you know, six months ago. Did we make a mistake then?
No, I think we'll make a mistake now.
Mr. Gallagher?
I think this, to Councilor Wood's point, I mean, this isn't written by any of us.
That's not true.
This was written, and these amendments were all proposed by the Economic Development Director.
That is not true.
That's what you said. That's what was said in the beginning.
That's not what I said.
That's what you... That's why he withdrew his sponsorship.
Mr. President.
So, Mr. Columbotes?
I clarified. Mrs. Loesch, I initially said they came from the economic...
Okay.
Let me finish. Community Economic Development Director. Mrs. Loesch corrected me by saying that we directed her to provide language for these changes. So, these were our intents. Her language, she's good at language. We received that, those changes, and approved them, and we're recommending them to the full council. So, that's what happened. So, they came from our committee and the planning board, for that matter.
So, you suggested some language, and you directed the...
Some... We had some goals in mind, some things we want to achieve legislatively. She's good at the language. We asked her for a language that was tight.
Language came back. Your group agreed to it.
Right.
And that's why it's here today. So, yes, there are people here that did have some editing power and imposed their will upon this document.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Souza.
There's one other thing that she said was, and she had...
She, sir?
I've been talking to the Community Economic Development Director. She alluded to a letter that was given to her by Mr. Rollins, and some of the people on the committee and some of the people in the general public seemed to have had a copy of that, and some of the other people on the committees did not even see it. So, she put... We asked, and she was telling us that she corresponded with Mr. Rollins, and they put something together, and she used that information to give us what we were asking for, for us to look at. Okay? Because that's what she was doing. She wasn't saying, "Here, you have to do this." She said, "Here's what I came up with."
That's her job. I mean, her job is essentially, along with legal review, is essentially to ensure whatever your intent is, is done in a way that makes sense. So, the prior ordinance, as it started with three lines, didn't cover any of the necessary requirements for the government to work, which is the application process, the limitations. So, a lot of the specific details in here were totally necessary for this ordinance to function in practicality. So, you all come up with the intent, right? But the practical, kind of where the rubber meets the road, has to come from the professionals guiding. And of course, it doesn't have to be accepted. You all can vote it down. That's your legislative roles. But I think what she was trying to do, with my assistance, not to get into attorney-client privilege, is to ensure that whatever your intent was is satisfied, in addition to there being proper procedures for there actually to be a special permit. That's a whole process. So, just to say, "We'll give a special permit," does nothing. So, and it doesn't allow for an applicant to come and, as Mr. Souza always points out, friendly to business. It's not friendly to business unless we spell a lot of this stuff out. So, I think most of it came from that procedural. But it comes down to all of your intent and the planning board's intent and the CDEC's intent.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
That was just clarification.
So, let's be reminded, we're voting now to amend as stated, right?
No. Mr. President, I did one thing.
Yes, Mr. Souza.
I'm still not absolutely clear that we've allowed for a testing facility on the dis... zoning.
If... Possibly, depending on how the cars fall, right? The way I see it. So, you've got, maybe one of the facilities is late to the draw, loses the paperwork. Maybe they choose to go a different path. Maybe they want to convert to a lab. So, there's the possibility that a lab would be allowed, a testing facility. Slim.
No, we're talking... Excuse me. I'm talking about a third business. We already have two.
A third business entity.
We have two entities right now.
Because this doesn't limit entities at all.
Right. Right. But the zoning, will our zoning allow for a testing facility to come into town?
Mr. President, as written, I read it as no.
I'm sorry. One more time, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Mr. President, I, to answer Mr. Souza directly, I read that as no, based on what we expect. we expect to happen.
What we expect to happen, correct.
Now, if other things than what we expect to happen, happen, then who knows? But if today, we, we have what is expected to happen, happen, then there will not be an ability to have a testing facility.
And correct me if I'm wrong, the expectation is that we're going to have these all absorbed, the two existing medical facilities will convert to our two and two, and become the recreational folks that are doing business in here, thereby preventing any third option of a.
That was my understanding of the intent of our vote in December. And I believe that that's what's accomplished in this amendment.
Understood.
So, Mr. President, what would we need to do to this, to assure that if a medical test, or a testing facility wanted to come to Bridgewater, they could, within our zoning, come to Bridgewater? What do we need to do to assure that this evening, so that we don't leave here, and then somewhere down the road, somebody comes in and says, "You have two of them, maybe we should be close."
So I don't think I'm necessarily the person that should answer that question. That's a legal question, I would say, to Mr. Rollins.
Mr. Rollins?
But, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
That's a, it's a difficult answer, but I mean, I, I think one possibility would be, and again, if it doesn't go through on the back end, through another vote, you, you could, in theory, strike the marijuana testing part of this, do the limitations without that in there, and then propose a, a new zoning ordinance that relates to testing facilities that's separate, or you could change the language within here to say that the number of special permits allowed are too, maybe relative to the two things that are not marijuana testing facility, and then have some additional proviso that allows for an additional special permit for just a marijuana testing facility. That may be some, and we're doing this on the fly, but you'd want it to be worded carefully. But that may be something you could, you could do within here.
So, so hearing that, if I'm correct here, for simple conversation, strike any mention of testing out of this, and then testing later on introduce as, so now it's, anybody can get any testing facility anywhere until we come up with a testing-specific ordinance?
That's obviously not the ideal way to do it. That's one way to do it. The ideal way to do it is to change the language in here to allow possibly an additional special permit or two, relative to just testing facilities. But you'd have to reword this so that it flowed with the rest of the ordinance. But that, that's a possibility.
And I'm saying, guessing that that wouldn't go down tonight. That would be something we'd have to return that to a, a committee, or table this until the next meeting. So someone would have to put a motion forward for that. Are we still discussing things? Any, any other questions?
Now, I'd like to make a motion.
Mr. Souza?
Table this, so we can.
Wouldn't table it.
Please?
Postpone.
Just postpone, okay, that we postpone this to our next meeting, so that we can look at the language to assure that we're not, or that we will be able to have a testing facility here if they want it. Whatever language is necessary, go through.
Is everybody clear on that motion?
Let me see.
A second for discussion.
Okay. Motion made by Mr. Souza, a second for discussion by Mr. Gallagher. Discuss away, gentlemen.
No, I just want to, I just, the clarification is, to me, if there's anything we should have in town, is a testing facility. If we're going to be growing it, and making it, and doing all that, there should be some checks and balances, perhaps in our town. I know there, one in West Bridgewater, but if there's anything we, we probably should, should.
Just to clarify, it's, it's a, it's a lab that has nothing to do with marijuana.
The only marijuana testing is in Framingham.
Framingham.
Okay. So if there's anything we should try to strive for in, in our community, because of the facilities that we have, and what it looks like they may reply for, is maybe a, a place that doesn't grow it, doesn't sell it, but tests the stuff that we're making here, if there's anything that we need. So, I don't know, I think it makes sense. I don't know where it's going, but maybe it makes sense, so.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
If we're going to go down that road, and, and change the numbers, and change what's being said, I can't imagine not going back to the Community Economic Development Planning Board, and asking them to re-review, and go back to advertising, and do hearings again, et cetera, et cetera, because we're, we're really substantially changing what the intent was that came out of our December meeting, what is reflected here. Now we're trying to expand the scope of what I thought we all had agreed to in December. We want to do more with marijuana, rather than less. And that's okay, if people want to do that, and want to vote that way. But I believe, and I, so, I'll vote to, I'll vote to table it, if that's what folks want to do, but I won't.
Postpone to a certain date.
Postpone it, I'm sorry, thank you, Mr. Rollins. I, I'll vote to postpone it to next meeting, but I'm not going to vote for any changes that come through as amendments, just at our level, without having it vetted back through the public, to say, "Look, we're asking to do more than what you thought we were doing in December," because that's not right, in my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion, Mr. Wood?
Can I ask one more question? And it's maybe out of order, because it's a general point of information. But in any of this language, we are not limiting the tier license that can be applied for by the cultivator, correct?
I don't see that in that.
So it could be a tier 11 or a tier 1?
I don't, yeah, I don't see any limitation on the tier.
Thank you.
Tier?
That's the size of the cultivation facility.
Right, so tier 11 is up to 100,000 square feet per facility. Right.
Very good. So we have Mr. Souza's motion to postpone until a given date.
By next meeting?
Next meeting, if that's it. So, next meeting, Mr. Souza, you would like to have this postponed till the next meeting. We've had a discussion, so those.
Can I just add to that? And I don't want to interrupt the discussion, but I, I would only ask procedurally, along
the lines of Counselor Fitzgibbons' point, what, what would you like staff to do between now and your next meeting? So, and having said that, my assumption is that there may be language changes that, that you're inclined to make here, and if that's the case, then I would, I would recommend that you refer that back to Community Economic Development and Planning Board.
Okay, so, Mr. Colombo.
If this council agrees with Mr. Fitzgibbons, that this should go back to the, be reposted back for full public review, then I would suggest that just be a separate, a separate zoning ordinance to allow for testing, as Mr. Rollins said. We can go ahead and proceed with this, and not change it, not, not edit it anymore to make sure we provide for testing, and, and provide for testing under a different avenue. So kind of close this chapter, and if we want to expand it through a, a public process, we could do that. So I will be voting against the amendment to postpone.
Mr. George?
Through you to the town attorney. If this were to pass, as is, would it have any effect on the, the testing aspect of it, of allowing that? Does this, what, a roadblock? Or does it make it easier?
Well, under Counselor Fitzgibbons' hypothetical situation, it, it's a big roadblock, right? It, it's not a roadblock, per se, right? It's not, there's no limitations, per se, under this.
Right.
The, the issue comes with the hypothetical, and I think the reality or the climate you all are, are dealing in. So I think hypothetically speaking, there's a roadblock, and I think it's probably a fairly large one. I think just from reading the statute, or the ordinance, there's no roadblock. So it, it's, it's a hypothetical. You're, you're basing it on the facts and circumstances you're presented with.
So I, I, I've been sitting back, watching this, and there's been a lot of discussion around intent. And I think there's enough confusion right now, that we do need to take a step back and go forward with discussions around exactly what the public is comfortable with in regards to this moving forward. Because I, I'll be honest with you, I can see both sides of the argument on December, okay? And I think right now, we are not in a place that we should be moving forward with something that may have unintended consequences, without giving, I think, another, another opportunity for people to discuss it. Because I, I'll be honest, I, I don't know where we are. You know, I can see it as people were dead set against any type of retail establishments, totally understand that. Were, you know, were very concerned about manufacturing and cultivation, totally understand that. I don't think we ever had any type of discussion around testing. And I don't even, I don't even think in December, the Cannabis Commission had the definition around testing. So, they did? Okay, I would, I don't think I was aware of it, so maybe that's on me. But I think it, this whole discussion has brought to light the fact that we need to tap the brakes a little bit, and probably come back, have another discussion, and then come back with a little bit more of an informed opinion of what we need to move forward. That's, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. George, Mr. Colombo.
As I say, the only unforeseen circumstance that might come out of this is that we don't provide for testing. I think we, the public has gotten a chance to talk about other circumstances. I think we, so, and again, I would say, if we, if we're concerned that if we really want to allow testing, and we haven't, and we've somehow messed that up, we can, under a separate process, we could provide for testing under a, a separate special permit. I think we've vetted this as it stands, fully. I think we should go ahead and vote on it.
Mr. Wood?
I have to disagree with Counselor Colombo, because if you, if you pass this, and it defines testing facility, and it's limited to the number and whatnot, then you haven't, haven't explicitly allowed it. And a further measure, we'd actually have to go back and change this, assuming that it passed.
Mrs. Loesch?
Through you to Mr. Souza. We just met on this six days ago, with the planning board and the CEDC, and testing did not come up in that meeting. What has changed for you to now want to edit this?
The Cannabis Commission today, like I said, came out with the rulings on their testing. It had to be a separate, independent unit from those people who are producing and selling.
That's always been the case.
Well, it just, they came out this today, all right? And I said, you know, I think you must have heard me a million times say, "We need more businesses in town." We got the worst part of it anyway, with the growing and the processing. Why not the testing? That was my thought, and that's why I brought it up.
Okay, thank you.
So last, I recollect, Mr. Souza was asking for a postponement until the next meeting, so this can be chewed a little bit. And then there was a discussion on whether we should kick that back through the advertisement loop, through the CEDC. Where are we with that? Is that what?
I, I think the motion is to postpone till the next meeting.
Simple, that's it, okay.
That's what I heard.
That's, Mrs. Loesch?
But to Mr. Dutton's point, we didn't, what are we kicking down the road? Like, we haven't given any explicit instruction on what we're looking for. So if that's for, we're looking to add testing, then that goes to your point, that we need to kind of.
Right, so.
Rewind and start all over again.
The, in, if I may, to clarify and to prevent unintended consequence, as Mr. George stated, of possibly unintentionally blocking out a testing facility with this two and two verbiage, or within this zoning ordinance, as it sits amended. So I'm thinking, or verbalizing what I think Mr. Souza is trying to say, is that we would postpone this until the next meeting, and have it reviewed by the CEDC, to assure that we're not unnecessarily blocking out potential testing license, if you will. Yes, no? Is that still not clear? Yes, Mr. Gallagher?
I think that it should, if, if we're going to postpone this till our next meeting, it should come back to us, with the intent of the, the motion, to somehow add in a testing special permit, or whatever. Because I think it should go to the committee the way we want it. Because it's, it's, Counselor Loesch is, is introducing this from, from Counselor Wood. So I think it should go to them the way we want it, because that's not what happened before. It, it, it went to them the way we wanted, and it came back with all this. So if we could at least start out, if we want to, if, if is, if the motion to table is, is successful, then that's, my view is it should come back to us, and then go to Community Economic Development. But what my intent was going to be earlier on in the meeting, by reducing the number from two to one, was to add in one special permit for a, a testing facility, but to reduce the other ones to one. That would have been my next motion, but we didn't get, we didn't get that far.
Offer discussion at this point, right?
All right.
Does that make it any clearer for what we're going to ask? Yes, Mr. Colombo?
I think the planning board and the CEDC would appreciate clearer direction. Do we want?
Would you like to take that, right now, that opportunity?
I think we should talk about it, otherwise we're wasting our time. We, do we want to allow for five testing facilities, above and beyond the, the two, according to each of these special permits? What, what do people want?
I guess the basic question is, why are we afraid of testing facilities? Right? So it's not retail, they're not selling retail, we solved the retail problem. It, it's another business. Why, why are we even concerned about the subject matter? It could be a blood testing facility, and people would be afraid of hepatitis C within the structure, or something else, right? So, so I don't know why we're concerned. And then if I extend that in my thought, my, my personal feeling, if we're not selling, if we don't have the pot shops, and that was the main thrust of, of last fall, then what do we care about the cultivation? Because it's, if it's two or four, or whatever, if we want to, you know, push it into the corner of the, of the town, that's fine. But again, I don't understand why we're concerned about the number of cultivators if it's not, not showing up in town on, on somebody's shelf for sale.
Mr. Colombo?
Apparently, many people in town have, whether it's a moral objection to any expansion of marijuana use, production, anything, that people have had bad personal experiences with it, people are afraid of it. So I think that's the rationale for limiting the, the number. And that's a philosophical argument, or whatever, that we're, that we're kind of made a compromise on, that we're going to ban retail sales, but allow some cultivation. So I don't think the majority of the council feels that, shares your opinion, that there's absolutely nothing, you know, we shouldn't provide any limits at all. So, I don't know, I, I. It'd be good for our committee to have specifics. Do we want to allow, how many?
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I, I'm actually with Mr. Colombo on this one, in that I would prefer passing this tonight, as is, and then having a discussion at our next meeting, saying, "We want to have a zoning ordinance come forward around testing facilities, and testing facilities for anything, and where can they be located, and how many permits can we have? If we need any at all, according to Mr. Wood, why are we worried about it? It's just another business." But if the general will of the council is to postpone and have this discussion next week, or at our, at our next meeting, certainly willing to do that, too.
I mean, this, originally, we're, you're going to send this off to advertising, right?
Correct.
So goes off to advertising, comes back, there's a whole multitude of things we can do to it? No?
And then it goes back to advertising again?
Right, okay.
So I'd, I'd move the question on postponing till our next meeting.
So you're, I'm sorry?
I'll second it.
I'd move the question on postponing to our next meeting.
And you second it?
Means now you have to take a vote on, on Counselor Souza's.
No more discussion?
No more discussion, yeah. We have to vote to close discussion. Has to be two-thirds.
You guys have lost me.
He's trying to end debate.
All right, so we're voting to close discussion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Anybody wish to keep discussion?
Aye.
I do.
No. I'd ask for, I'd ask for a roll call vote on that one.
Sure. If we may have a roll call vote on whether or not to cease discussion?
It looks like the number of people are interested in more discussion, so I'll say no.
Mr. Colombo.
No.
Mr. Wood.
This is on the motion to postpone till the next meeting.
Move that question.
Fine, yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Whoa, whoa, hello? Hello? Really sorry.
No, no, it's not you, it's us.
Mr. Chase.
Yes, to end.
Mr. George.
No.
Mr. Loesch.
Yes.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Yes.
Five to four. Five in favor, four against.
So the motion fails.
So not to belabor this, but if I may.
Mr. George, go ahead.
It's too late for that.
Well, and this is probably the reason why I voted no. So for clarity's sake, because I know that we have a lot of discussion around the permitting, the permits, the special permits. This is about zoning. This is about what we have in front of us in regards to the zoning.
Yes.
So we could have 1,000 permits available, but if they, we don't have this, they don't have a place to put it, it's a moot point, correct?
Yes.
This is, this is where I think we've lost all of the focus, is around the zoning, determining the zoning, what can be in the zone. And then the permits themselves kind of play out, for a practical perspective.
Yeah, I mean, it depends on the granting authority. They could say yea or nay, they could, I mean, without limitations, right? You could say no to a special permit.
And if there isn't, if there isn't enough land in the zone to have whatever it is that we have a million permits for, it can't be issued anyway.
Correct.
So I'm, this is, this is why I wanted to keep the discussion. We've been talking an hour about permits. This is about zoning. This is about talking about the zoning itself. And from a practical perspective, I think what we're doing is we're getting caught in the minutia around how many permits for certain things can be out there. Now, I'm saying it has to be restricted, but this is zoning, folks. And this is where I'm getting really aggravated around where we're going with the nitpicking around things that aren't relevant, in my opinion, to the zoning.
Mr. Wood.
We did zone back in December. We zoned that cultivation can happen in any business district, and it's, it's wide open. There's no use table that limits zoning. We decided in December to allow cultivation to occur in any, any place that special permit accepted.
Right. And which I understand, but we're talking specifically about the Elm Street overlay.
Well, now we are because you want to change that zoning from wide open and townwide to a specific zone.
And Counselor Wood, I absolutely agree with you on it, but what I'm saying now is we've lost the focus on the zoning aspect of it. And we're talking about the permitting. Hence the reason, from my perspective, we need to go back to the committee, and we need, we need to give them clear direction around, what is the intent of what we're going to finally vote on? Is it going to be on the permitting aspect of splitting it out between testing and the rest within the confines of the zoning that we have established? That, to me, is unclear for all of us. That would be my discussion point, that would be my charge.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
I'd just suggest, Mr. George, that when we do this, that it be six to three or more in, in favor of whatever point we're moving toward. And I'm not sure this council, at this point in time, can count to six to three on anything around marijuana. And it was my understanding in December that what we wanted to do was ban retail sales. We did that. It was my understanding in December that we wanted to allow two medical facilities in order to maintain their viability as businesses to be able to grow marijuana and, you know, do whatever they needed to do to make it sellable, to sell wholesale. It's my understanding that this zoning ordinance does those two things. Now, if we want to change the focus to going to testing facilities and allowing those, great, I'm all for business, but I continue to agree with Mr. Colombo that let's do that as a separate, as a separate thing moving forward. And, and vote on this tonight, vote on, to send this to advertising, not postpone it to the next meeting. If folks want to, that's fine. We can do that. We can have the same discussion again next week. It's like Groundhog's Day. I, I get it, it was the whole, you know, so that's fine, we can do that. But I'm not sure in two weeks what we're going to do in directing Mr. Colombo's committee, the Planning Board, the Community Economic Development Director, to do something that we need to decide on tonight then. So that's just my two cents.
Mr. Colombo.
While initially I did say, suggest that it might make sense to pass this now and do, provide for testing in a separate ordinance, I think Mr. Wood made a good point in that that, having passed this, passing this could make the additional provision of allowance for testing more complicated. So I just thought it, I stand corrected, and I think it makes sense to wait on this and consider, if we want to go back and consider providing for testing, we can do that, but we should wait on this.
Mr. Souza.
Sticking with the zoning, as Mr. George said, basically, that's just what my intent was. Keep them together, up in the area, you know? It was spoken about, you know, send them downtown and all that. Allow it, but send them to the same area, have them build up in Elm Street.
So I'm in favor of postponing this, just simply for the fact that, that a lot of more questions have been brought up, and I haven't put my eyes on what you're talking about from the CCC, whether or not there's allotment, as there is for, you know, in some of the other verbiage, for virtual establishments. Do they cover virtual establishments, whatever you said come out today? So just for the sake of my own edification here and my ability to review this with what's come to light in our discussion so far, I'm a big fan of putting it off for, till next meeting. That's my.
Then I'd make a motion that we direct the CEDC and the Planning Board to meet before our next meeting with input from the Community Economic Development Committee.
Direction.
Director, to come up with amendments to zoning ordinance FY 18008, consistent with allowing as many marijuana testing facilities in town as are appropriate. Them to determine how many that is.
Okay.
I don't know. I, I can't make that discussion now, but I, I want them to have clear direction on what is, allow as many in the zones that you think is appropriate, where you think they're appropriate.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay, motion's been made by Mr. Fitzgibbons, seconded by Mr. Gallagher, and he's seconded for discussion. Would you like to kick off that discussion?
So.
I just want to be clear that.
He made the motion, he gets to first.
I made the motion, so can I just?
Okay, yep, yep.
I just want to talk, and then you can ask whatever you need to. Mr. Colombo has asked for direction. If we're going to postpone it till our next meeting, I'd like to see solid input from the Planning Board and the CEDC, because we're going to send it back to them. And I don't want to go through a whole rigmarole of November 7th or even way before that to June 26th. We could be here next November still looking at this if we don't have clear direction at our next meeting. Well, we won't vote on it on our next meeting, but, you know, it'll be, it'll be September, October before we get this done. So I want to be as clear as possible upfront before we postpone it so that we get the best information coming back to us at our next meeting.
Mr. Gallagher.
So the two, Counselor Fitzgibbons pointed that it, it shouldn't come back to us until they've got their, until the Community Economic Development Committee has.
Then Mr. Souza will have to modify his motion.
Yeah, but your motion says that.
I'm directing, I'm directing them to do it before our next meeting.
But what if they don't? Then it shouldn't be on our agenda, that's, that's the point.
We can postpone it at that point, then.
If they can't meet before July 10th, then it shouldn't be, if they don't have their recommendation to us by July 10th, then we shouldn't take this up again. That's how I read that.
Mr. Haley controls the agenda. He can, he can put it on or off.
On or off. Mrs. Loesch.
Just from a feasibility standpoint, next week is July 2nd. The availability of the count to the two other committee members, would you be able to meet next week with the Planning Board? So we have to get nine people?
I could, I don't know if the Planning Board, I don't, yeah.
The feasibility of having the other body to be available is not going to meet the deadline of July 10th.
Yeah, we should. I'd recommend we refrain from setting a hard deadline.
Then we'd need to, Mr. Souza to modify his motion to put it off till the meeting in August.
Or until you have a determination.
So, yeah.
To some certain period of time, you're just postponing it to a certain period.
Not to give a hard date, but. So, Mr. Souza. A motion to.
So I'll withdraw my motion then.
Okay, withdrawn, withdrawn, seconded. So that motion is off the table. Mr. Souza's remains, but will be rewarded.
We can postpone it until the both committee and the board can meet.
And provide a.
And provide.
Recommendation.
Content to come back. Right, their recommendation. All right, so I will change my motion to postpone it until both the Community Economic Development Committee and the zoning board can meet and have a recommendation sent back to the council.
I'd second that.
There's a caveat there.
Yeah, no, I'd, I'd like to make an amendment, if I could. Mr. Souza said zoning board, I'm sure he meant Planning Board. But that it be, that it be with the motion I just made and withdrew, that the Planning Board and the Community Economic Development Committee and the Community Economic Development Director come back with a recommendation as to zoning, as to number and places of the maximum number of marijuana testing facilities appropriate for the town.
I second that.
So, so the hybrid motion has been made and seconded.
Discussion.
Discussion, Mr. Wood.
In that discussion, why would we want to come up with a limit for the testing facilities?
It could be.
Whether to accept, yeah, that could be. And may I have latitude to ask one additional question to the attorney?
You may, sir.
Procedurally, under the selectman form of government, the Planning Board was required to have a hearing and make zoning, zoning changes, and then it would pass. I think at a town meeting, at a town meeting, right? Why are we required, if we make textual changes to any zoning ordinance, to send it back to the Planning Board for an additional hearing at their level? These are proposed amendments. Why can't we make additional amendments and just send it to advertising?
There are some you can. So it, it's a, it's a tricky issue. However, typically, when you're making a zoning amendment more restrictive, you're going to have to send it back to the Planning Board based on what case law says, okay, and the validity. And so you send that back to, if you're making it less restrictive, oftentimes you don't need to unless it changes substantively what was actually heard at the Planning Board's public hearing. So it's really a matter of notice. It's public notice at the Planning Board's public hearing, and the Planning Board taking the input, because they're supposed to be specialized in the zoning issues, right? And then making the amendments based on the public input based off of the notice that they received. So it, it's, it's a discretionary thing, to be entirely honest with you. But it's always safe to send it back.
So if we strike testing facilities from this, we are less restrictive, and case law says we don't need to send it back?
I mean, in, in theory, you're, you're saying you're less restrictive, but there's, and again, we're getting into the weeds now, but there's case law that's, that could, that could interpret that, you know, not having that in there could actually mean that it's not a permitted use. So there, there's cases on both sides of that. So if we don't account for it anywhere, and it's not on the use table, you can make an argument on both sides of that case. So I think you could, in theory, be actually more restrictive.
But, but there are other marijuana establishments in the state definition that we have not included in our definition, so by, by the simple nature that we've excluded them from, from our ordinance and being located in Bridgewater.
Correct.
Right.
That's right.
So if.
But if you're taking one of those out of the current ordinance that you have in place, and then there's an argument to be made that by not having it on the use table, it's not allowable use in any district, that's technically making it less restrictive. That's a legal argument, there's, there's, it's a kind of a, it can go either way, but I would always recommend that go back to the Planning Board, because why take the chance?
Thank you.
Any further discussion on the amendment as stated by Mr. Fitzgibbons via Mr. Souza?
It's kind of peripheral to the amendment, but through you, Mr. Haley, would it, Mr. Rollins, would it be appropriate for members of this council to contact the Community Economic Development Director with input speaking towards?
Individually?
Yeah, individually. I think it makes sense for everyone in the council to email the director and say, "How many testing facilities, if any, do you want to allow?"
Individual discussions are perfectly acceptable. What can't happen is obviously a discussion with all, everyone CC'd, because then it becomes an issue with open meeting law. But individual discussions with staff and professional staff that deal with this, that are going to have to implement this, are completely acceptable.
Mr. Fitzgibbons.
Mr. Rollins, how do you square that opinion with the charter that says the town council shall not direct department heads?
Well, you wouldn't be directing, you'd be seeking advice from a department head. Right? You'd be seeking input relative to their professional opinion.
I'll take your opinion on that, thank you.
Further discussion on the Souza-Fitzgibbons amendment?
No.
Okay. I'm not going to attempt to rephrase your amendment so we can go from discussion to voting. Those in favor of the amendment as it's stated, those in favor, aye. Oh, shall we do raise hands? I'm sorry?
Voice votes.
Voice votes, fine, okay. I'm losing mine. Those in favor, aye.
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 Those against? Okay.
So on the main, on the main motion of postponing till then, shall we have a vote?
Yes. Good point. So for the, the main motion to postpone until that given time, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Okay. We can turn the page now, folks. That was 008. New business.
May I introduce this?
You may.
As you recall, then-President Fitzgibbons did put together a small group of us to get together to talk about how we would improve the Central Business District in such a way that it brings people into the district as well as commercial, commercial aspects. So this is, now seeing all the, all the striking changes here. So what this does is it essentially allows a, a, a construction in the Central Business District that leverages bonus points, as the town manager said. And the bonus points can come from a number of different areas. So the, if you look at page two, at the bottom half where there's some amendments, the transfer of development rates means that the development rates that a developer holds in one area can be transferred into another area. The, the allowable density can rise, can rise from eighteen. The allowable density can rise, can rise from 18, which is the current language, up to 26 if the bonus program is leveraged. So a transfer of development rates allows for one-half units in the new, in the, in the new area for every one development area that, that was given up. If the developer is interested in preserving historic structures, he or she can add two units for every one structure preserved. An example might be our monuments downtown, if there's some preservation done there, you can allocate units based on that. All of these are conditional based on the planning board accepting that the plan for, for these bonus points is done. You can also add units by making a payment to the Affordable Housing Trust, the numbers are there for you. If you make public streetscape improvements, such as sidewalks and trees on the, on the road and other things, it allows bonus points too. And providing solar energy can bring a unit too. So, so the idea is that a combination of different bonus points, you start off at 18 per acre, and you can elevate that to 26 per acre by bringing in these other aspects of, of other properties that you own or other pieces that you improve upon. The other, the other piece of this is some height changes. So, the idea is to have the first floor commercial, I think it's 30% of building, everybody should read through in detail this, but then allow three units above, three floors above that for a total of four floors or a total of 45 feet. Again, this is Central Business District, so you want people in your Central Business District to support your businesses in that, in that area. There's language in here about parking, there was a question earlier about parking, so it lays out the economic developer, if anybody's been to, I think it's Hudson, New Hampshire, and seen that area, she was greatly involved there, she's looked at a number of different regions for how much parking per unit is desirable. The idea is that you have a mixed use of residential and commercial, so you want that parking leveraged for both. We also counted things like streetside parking and other parking areas to understand the parking for downtown. So the majority of this is to, is to allow a developer to come in and motivate that developer to build a project that makes financial sense to him or her, and to allow him or her to leverage these bonus points to improve Bridgewater and to reallocate development resources from one spot to another. And I think that's.
I'd make a motion to refer to the Community Economic Development Committee and the planning board.
No, second. Motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbons, seconded by Mr. Wood. Any further discussion, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Colm Bodas, Mr. Wood, Mr. Dutton, our Community Economic Development Director, Mr. Driscoll for working very hard on getting this in shape to put before us, to put before the committees. You know, is it perfect, who knows, that's what we have hearings for, et cetera. But, you know, it's, it's great that we're at, at this point, and I appreciate all their hard work.
Other comments, discussion?
I just have a question. How does this tie in with the downtown revitalization recommendations that were passed, I think, three or four years ago? And does it, did you look at them when you built this?
Yeah, and that's what the economic developer is trying to do, is to, is to pull all that together.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Colm Bodas?
One, the density is a lot greater than that plan recommended, and we just felt that it was, we just needed greater density allowances. I just want to point out that, you know, one of the density bonuses is public streetscape improvements, and that is, and I think this is an important dynamic where a private investor is gonna make improvement to the whole street and kind of improve the whole district, and therefore, they've got, you know, they're gonna create improvements that will help their project but also other projects, and so that's a way to, you know, get things snowballing. And as we've seen, it's hard to find public funding for these sorts of projects, so this is a way to create, provide private funding for more public benefit, so. I think it's appropriate.
Other discussion? Okay, so there was.
Refer to the Community Economic Development and Planning Board.
Okay, so those in favor moving?
Aye.
Those against? Thank you for that. Now, new business, orders OFY 19-008. Transfer sewer reserve capital transfer. Mr. Town Manager, please dive into that one.
This is fairly simple, this is just looking to transfer monies that will begin the process of planning for the wastewater plant upgrade. We've got the funds in hand, so better to spend funds that we have in hand on the initial startup, initial engineering costs than to have to borrow those, so that's what is in front of you tonight.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
Made by Mr. Fitzgibbons, seconded by Mr. George, discussion, Mr. Fitzgibbons?
None.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? Moving on to OFY 19-009, transfer order of water reserve capital transfer, Town Manager.
Very similar principle to sewer, except for this money, $294,000 is designed to fund, is used to fund the design work for the upgrade at the High Street Water Treatment Facility, what will be the High Street Water Treatment Facility.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
Motion made and moved, discussion?
None.
Hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those against? And now over to order, we at 10? What was that, what did we just put through? Yeah, so we're at FY 19-010, collective bargaining agreement and ratification, Bridgewater Police Association, again, refer to the Town Manager.
Mr. President, this is the ratification of the just recently completed police, I'm sorry, the police contract negotiation, and it's relatively simple negotiation, and I'm just pulling it up right now. The, it's a three-year agreement, begins Jan, July 1st of this year, in a week or two. Essentially, it increases, making some increases to clothing allowance, compensation is increased by 1.25 on July 1st, and then 1.25 on January 1st, which is an effective annualized rate of 1.88. And then again, a similar split in FY 20, 1% and 1%, which is effective 1.51% annualized, and then a 1.75% on July 1st, 2020, for the year. This, important to note that these increases are very much in line with the town's five-year revenue projections, and they keep these, they keep the three-year expense increases to within our estimated revenues as we project them, which are 3.86, 3.5, 3.5 for the next three years.
Motion to refer to the Budget and Finance and Finance Committees?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion?
I just have a question for the Town Manager. The compensation increases noted of 1.251, 1.75 is in the, is in the contractual rates, but to stay within the 3.68, the 3.5, and the 3.5, you also have to consider when somebody moves up a step as well, and were any, any steps increased or anything like that?
Yep, well, when, when Tony develops the, the expense projections, he figures, calculates in all, in step increases throughout the three-year period. We've actually calculated in projected health insurance increases over the three years, and then a number of other smaller items, but those are the main ones.
Essentially, what you're saying is that the 1% to 2%.
COLA.
COLA translates to a 3.5% personnel cost increase because of the steps and the health insurance expectations, et cetera. Thank you.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? Done with that, moving on to citizens' comments. If you have any comments, come on up, state your name, address.
Hello, Taylor Sullivan, 215 Norland Park. So I have a few things I wanted to mention. First off, Tim, what you said kind of struck me, you said, what was the intent of that original meeting back on December 19th? And I agree with you, what I took and the 100-plus members of our Bridgewater Cares Group was that we were going to allow cultivation and allow ACS and theory to cultivate. So, that ordinance that you just had up, I know you asked Attorney Rollins, does that ordinance reflect that? And I'm gonna agree, I'm gonna disagree with Attorney Rollins because, in my opinion and in my research that I've done, it does not reflect that. The special permit ordinance is going to allow theory wellness, so two special permits for two activities. And so, theory can get a permit to cultivate and product manufacture, ACS can get a permit to cultivate and product. What we thought it was, we would allow theory and ACS to each cultivate only. So, I'm, you know, don't mean to disagree or disparage anything you said, but that ordinance with a special permit does not honor that intent. So, it's confusing to many people in our group, and a lot of people in our group are upset because it's expanding on that, let's call it what it is. So, that's, just wanted to say that. Second off, we don't need to do a zoning ordinance to limit the number of marijuana establishments in our town, we can do a general bylaw to limit the number of marijuana establishments to the number of RMDs or fewer. So, Dennis, your general for the ban on retail hasn't been passed or brought forth yet, you could add to that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but KP Law has a guide out for municipalities, you could add it to that, so you could say, we are banning the retail sale of marijuana, we are limiting the number of marijuana establishments to two, or whatever you picked. Now, going back to the testing part of it, the hearings, we had 100-plus people, and I think we made it clear prior to that night with all those 100 people, for the four or five months prior to that core group of people, 50, 60 people coming up here, that we didn't want any marijuana establishments in our town, and that included testing. So I think we've already made it clear with that, and I feel like we have just been going round and round in circles, and I know a lot of people in our group are sick of it, frustrated, have had enough about hearing about marijuana, you know, and that's why a lot of people talk about town meeting, because how much time can you dedicate to coming up here every two weeks when it's just being referred back to the CEDC, the planning board? I mean, it's, it's crazy. And then again, with the testing, say you wanted to go that route, if you have a general bylaw that limits the number of marijuana establishments to two, well, testing is a marijuana establishment, so give one of those, like marijuana establishments license, licenses to a tester, and don't let ACS or theory cultivate, it's all what you want to do, but you can accomplish that with a general bylaw, you can limit it that way. So if testing is the route you want to go, well, then that can be one of the two, but I think we've made it clear coming up here time and time again, and those 100, you know, plus people that we had at that hearing, that we want to limit the number of marijuana establishments here. And so, I don't know why we have to keep going around in circles, I mean, it's, you know, you guys are supposed to represent the people, and we made that clear. Lastly, the general bylaw to ban retail sales, you guys don't even have a properly enacted ban. You need a general bylaw for a retail sale ban, and you need a zoning, and the general is what prevents the RMD from converting, you don't have a general. So, you don't have a leg to stand on if they, if they wanted to convert, which I hate to say that up here, but you really don't. So, I just feel like, you know, I've, this keeps going round and round, and it's not done properly, I mean, no other town keeps going back and forth with this, it's either an outright ban, or you did what Milford did, which is what, where, which is, I think, what the intent was for us to do, but it's taking too long. You know, people can apply to cultivate, people can apply to product manufacturing, you have nothing in place, they can apply to convert, you don't even have a general bylaw. If you read the CCC regulations, a zoning can't prohibit conversion prior to June 17th. The only thing that can is a general bylaw, and you don't have a general bylaw in place. So I think that that, and you can speak with Attorney Rollins, I know I'm going over my time, but I think the focus needs to be on the general bylaw and limiting the number of marijuana establishments. You can decide later which marijuana establishments you want to allow, whether it's a tester, a manufacturer, a cultivator, but you need to limit that number of marijuana establishments to the RMDs. I mean, that's the will of the people, it's, it's all semantics, tester, cultivator, we've made it clear, we want it limited to the number of RMDs at the very minimum, most of the people didn't want it at all until that last hearing, but.
Thank you.
That was it.
Well, I agree with everything that Ms. Sullivan just said, and I agree with Mr. George, he, he's correct about this ordinance, there's just absolutely too much in it, it should have been more restrictive as far as the zoning goes. I mean, you have put everything but the kitchen sink in this ordinance, I don't know how that's come about, because it's got permits, as he said, special permits, whereas you could have just focused on the district, we have to restrict the marijuana businesses to the Elm Street, and we haven't really done that yet. The other thing, as Taylor said, early on, the residents had wanted a total ban, and we would have gotten that, but we were held hostage by one of our counselors so that we would have to allow cultivation so that the businesses could stay in business, well, they are gonna stay in business no matter what. But I think you've lost sight of the fact that the residents do not want more marijuana, whether it's testing or any other businesses in town. So I think you should recall those meetings where the residents did speak out and not plan to add more businesses as the residents wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, on to council comments. I'll start with you, Mr. Souza.
I think I'm just gonna say good evening.
Okay, Mr. Colm Bodas, thank you, Mr. Souza.
I'm just excited about the changes to the Central Business District, I think we're on the cusp of a launch, garnering some private investment and moving things along, so I look forward to that.
Mr. Wood?
I'll just recognize, and I'll leave the main comments up to others, but Counselor Sullivan passed away this week. He and I and a couple others here served time together on the council, and I know he was a selectman before, so the families, you know, affected, and, and I just wanted to put him in our memories. It's, it's kind of interesting, we're, if we, if we say ordinance that specifically says a business can do this or that, we're edging closer and closer to spot zoning, which generally doesn't, doesn't work well. And so I think we need to stay away from that when we get into all these other amendments that people are talking about. I, I want to say again, I thought that the intention was clear to last December when the council voiced its opinion and voted on the thing that we voted on, and now we're cycling back, I call it a carousel problem because you're coming back around for the, for the ring. A couple weeks ago, and a couple people saw this, I took an informal survey, I don't know if I've said it here, but I took an informal survey of a small group of young adults, and I said, how easy is it to get marijuana in Bridgewater? And they said it was extremely easy. And I said, what's the cost per ounce? And they said, around $200. If you do any readings about some of the other states that have enacted full retail and that, the price point in, on the street drops to about $35, and takes out the, the underground economy for marijuana, and that's a very positive thing, whether people want to believe it or not. I go forward in this, all these discussions, knowing that it's easy to get in Bridgewater. And because it's easy to get in Bridgewater, we can't eradicate it just because we say we're, pretend it doesn't exist. So, it's, I always think, it's easy to get in Bridgewater, but I can't tax it. And when we have all these budget hearings and, you know, tight spots in various points on the budget, I think of ways to generate revenue, and that's my point of view, and hopefully everybody appreciates that. Finally, July fourth is coming up. July fourth here in town, and I grew up in Maryland, I spent a lot of time in Bridgewater before I officially moved here, July fourth is one of those holidays that really, really pulls together what a small town feel is like. We have the parade, we have the fireworks, we have a volunteer committee that works on that, and I don't know all the people that are on the committee, so I can't name them, but I really appreciate the work of that committee. It's not appointed here, it's a self-driven committee, and they do an awesome job pulling together the vendors, the carnival, the places on the field, the fireworks. They start the day with the parade, they start the day even earlier, and they have other activities. And this is the type of thing that makes Bridgewater Bridgewater, and other people from other communities come into our community who experience that small-town feel. And I'm reminded of that every year, and I expect, hopefully, the weather will be good next week, too. Thanks.
Mr. Gallagher?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, want to send my condolences to the Sullivan family and the recent passing of former Town Administrator Paul Sullivan. When I moved here twenty-three years ago, he was one of the first people that I met with his work on the Planning Board and then his work as the Town Administrator, Selectman, and throughout the years, and I think that his service to the town should certainly be noted, and he certainly will be missed in the town. On that note, the Fourth of July, as Councilor Wood said, is coming up. It's always a great day in Bridgewater, and I got the banner ready to go, so I'm looking forward to my, with my counselors, to carry the banner down Broad Street on Wednesday morning.
Yes, Wednesday morning. Mr. Chase?
Thank you. I guess I would echo those comments about the Fourth of July holiday. I think it's a very special day for everyone, and it should be enjoyed, first and foremost, safely. And in that regard, I think I would just like to remind people that private use of fireworks is prohibited in the Commonwealth, and we don't need to go very far at all in news reports to find stories of injury and fires that result from private use of fireworks, so please be mindful of that and refrain from that kind of activity, and enjoy the town fireworks.
Mr. George?
Great. So, a couple things. I think something that went out today that's probably second most controversial to what we discussed for over an hour and a half is cable. So, there is a questionnaire that I think was published by the Cable Committee, looking for public input on cable. This will be the process for us to start hopefully giving feedback to our cable provider, so please take the opportunity, because I do see out there a lot of, a lot of issues and questions around cable, so please take the time on that. Second thing is, my oldest daughter just turned eighteen, and she got her happy birthday card with voter registration form from our town clerk, which I still think is fabulous. And I didn't realize this, too, but if you let her know when you come in, she'll have a cupcake for you, which I thought was pretty neat as well. So, I think myself and I are going to go with Shannon. She's going to drop off her voter registration, which is great. And then, Fourth of July, weather report so far, eighty-six and partly cloudy, so let's come out and have a good time. Thank you.
Mr. Slosch?
Just to kind of answer some of the last statements, there's process, and there's open meeting laws, and there's times in which people can get together, so timing is never something that we can really control. If this was our full-time jobs in which we were getting paid, we could probably get things done every day, but unfortunately, per the last Budget Committee meetings and what we just passed, there's no room for that. So, unfortunately, we will continue to go through the process. We will post meetings. We want to be as transparent as possible, because I believe I've heard previously that we're not transparent, we move too quickly, and too transparent, we move too slowly. So, I just want to be clear that we want the best for the town. I think it's always our intent. We wanted a ban on retail sale of marijuana in the town of Bridgewater, Massachusetts, in which that has passed, so to be clear, that is rested, and no one can buy marijuana from a retail shop in Bridgewater, and I'm very proud of this council for making that happen. But we have to also look at things outside of that scope and outside of a hundred people, because I believe there's twenty-seven thousand in this town. So, with that, the July Fourth Parade will be great. I know it's really in honor of me, because it's my wedding anniversary, so thank you for that, and I look forward to seeing everybody there.
Mr. Fiskivens?
Thank you. I'd like to thank the fourteen folks we reappointed to various boards and commissions this evening. Many have been involved in the town for a number of years, and I appreciate their service. Which brings me to Paul Sullivan, who was involved in the town for many, many years. I've known Paul since my brother John and his son Dan were buddies at the Williams School. So, I worked with him first in the town when I was on the advisory board, and he was on the Planning Board and working on the Planning Board budget, and working together to make that happen. And obviously, he moved on to become the Town Administrator, a selectman. We sat with him on this town council for a while. He was a mentor, a friend, a trusted confidant, and a really great public servant that many people in Bridgewater can look up to. He's a man I'm going to miss, and the town of Bridgewater owes him a great debt that I'm not sure we can ever repay, so rest in peace, Sully.
Thanks, Tim. I grew up with his kids, Mr. Sullivan's kids, there were two Sullivans down the nip, and he was one of them, and he loomed pretty large, especially with being a young, politically motivated young man. He was one of many examples in this town that I had hoped to follow by their example. Who knows if I'm doing a good job lighting a candle for them or a candle within their light? I don't know, but Tim said it best. Fourth of July, I have my T-shirt. I don't think all the counselors do. It's my first year.
I'm picking mine up this week.
Sure, sure. We'll see. We'll see everybody on the Fourth of July Parade.
I will not be wearing a T-shirt.
Okay. I've been there. It's not like that parade where you didn't tell me to show up. So, I'll be there with my son Declan, who's becoming quite the Fourth of July guy. You'll see him shouting, "Happy Birthday, America," I'm sure. Other than that, I'd like a glass of water and maybe some warm milk and go to bed. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have no executive session.
Second. Okay. Those in favor?